Okay, so today is recording? Yep, yeah, excellent. It's November seventeenth, it's GBOs's regular November meeting. Welcome, everybody. Couple of things to read out first, then we'll call to order. Go to Board of Supervisors, Subject Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute forty-four dot six-two dot three-one-zero, and Anchorage Municipal Code one dot two-five, Public Meeting. The Goadwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Goadwood Public Meeting Standard Conduct. Call the meeting to order at seven oh one. And then I would ask Brian, as is traditional, to do the land acknowledgement, please.
Of course. So, the Goadwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska whose land we reside on. The community of Goadwood, situated between the areas known to be Denaina and Atlantic homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks the sustainable use of Goadwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you. I'd ask for the local police staff.
Yes, Brianna Sullivan.
Present.
Brian Burnett.
Present.
Jennifer Wingard.
Present.
Kelly Okeneck.
Present.
Thank you. Mike Edgington.
Present. Thank you. I assume we have a quorum. I'll ask for any disclosures people want to make now, or we can make them on the individual items. Okay. Announcements, we have quite a long list of announcements, so bear with me. The public is empowered to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged, either virtually or in person. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Upcoming meeting. We have a work session regarding intergovernmental charges, which is yet to be scheduled, and a Rules and Goals Part Two meeting, which is also yet to be scheduled. We have a couple of other meetings coming up this week, is a special meeting on Wednesday.
It is, that's maybe.
Okay.
Stay.
GBOs committees will hold elections to fill executive leadership roles at their first meeting in the new year. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is currently out for draft. The public comment period is fairly short, it's November the eleventh to the thirtieth. I think we may be discussing that later. Plating Board will meet on January the seventh to view plating, review plating requests for both the Orca View and Goadwood Industrial Plarks, and references are here. Start off with Agenda Revisions and Approval, and it's a motion to approve the tonight's agenda.
Who to approve?
I'll second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any suggested changes?
I'd like to make an amendment if the board is okay with it to add this WPP item in.
Business.
Didn't see it, so I'm sure they're okay with that. Presuming we have the meeting on Wednesday, it could be all business there.
Okay, so we'll put that as item sixteen or fifteen and a half. Thank you. I should have a second to that amendment.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
On that amendment, or on that?
Along the amendment initially.
Okay.
Do that by assent. Any? Okay, so we have an amended agenda in front of us, any further discussion?
Yes, for item number twelve, I think we need to, we do need to move the update for FCC bylaws into new business. That's not old business, it was on our agenda last year, or sorry, last month, but I did just review the tape of that meeting and we never discussed it, so it is still technically new business.
I'll second the amendment to move that item to new business.
Okay, any further discussion on that? If not, we'll do that by consent. Okay. So we have two amendments, the two, the agenda with the two changes. Any further discussion on the agenda? If not, okay, we will do it by consent. Any objections? Okay. Our agenda is ready. We have minutes from October the twentieth, GBOs meeting, October the twenty-first, GBOs and NUC joint meeting, and October the twenty-seventh, MOA and GBOs meeting. I did say a motion to approve all the minutes together, or if somebody wishes to do them individually.
I'll move it through.
Okay.
A second to.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do it by consent. Hearing no objection, or hearing no objections, minutes are approved. We have nothing on the consent agenda, so I think we can move straight to the presentation. We have a presentation from AWOB on the Draftwater Master Plan. Okay. You'd like to, there's a microphone at the front there.
Permission, permission to share my screen with the presentation online?
Sure.
Hey, introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'm Todd Carroll with Anchorage Water Waste Water Utility. I'm a project manager in the Engineering Division, so the capital program manager for Anchorage Water Waste Water Utility. Julie, I think you kind of introduced yourself, you want to introduce yourself? You're on the line.
Sure, Julie Justin with HDR doing public involvement and communications for the Water Master Plan update.
And I'm Anson Moxus, I'm the HDR Project Manager.
Yeah, so we just wanted to give a brief presentation on where we're at with the master plan and let you know it's out there. It's been out for a couple of weeks for public review and comment. And we're not necessarily here today to say, hey, did you read it? Let's take your comments right now, if you, you know, but if you have, then we can address them in the time allotted, great. If not, you know, we can deal with that later. Okay, but basically Julie's just gonna flip through some slides here for me and we'll kind of talk about what the plan is and the purpose. You can go to the next slide. So. Little echo. Okay. Okay. So, yeah, basically the plan, we try and do them every seven to ten years. It's been a little longer on this one, it was twenty-twelve, we did our last Water Master Plan. And so we started this one a couple of years ago, got delayed a little bit, and we're trying to wrap it up by the end of the year. It looks at identifying and prioritizing, once it's done with looking at all the influences, capital programming over the next twenty-year horizon, as well as just kind of baselining where the utility's at and what our service levels are and where we look at being in the future to meet the community needs. Go ahead, Julie. So the existing system's pretty expansive, in case you didn't know, it goes all the way from McLutna all the way down here to Goadwood for our service area. There are other systems within Anchorage not operated by the utility and private wells and everything else. But basically, you know, we are the largest water provider in the state. And you can see on there, you know, we deliver about twenty-three million gallons on average per day. It's more in the summer during peak demand, that's the fifty million gallons per day type average that we're talking about there. And we have a lot of tanks and hydrants and everything else that you see and don't see in the system. And so as part of assessing the system and where we're gonna be and where we're going, we've been soliciting input around the community from stakeholders, groups like you, but we also look at external drivers, like where's the population? We investigated the normal resources for where that's predicted to be at, and then the, you know, changes in water use over time. If anything, we've seen, like many places have, that the per capita demand has kind of tapered off a little bit from what it used to be. Look at risk and needs for the system and any regulatory drivers that might be coming around that might have influences on how we need to treat or how we need to operate that could influence the type of work we need to do. So some of the, there's a couple of main categories of the type of projects that we'd be looking at, like refurbishment, replacement, the R and R projects, as we call them. That's a lot of what we are dealing with now, and we used to do a lot of the pipe work in the early two thousands, there was a lot of pipe replacement projects. Now we're getting more into the facilities and plant work, because a lot of those facilities are starting to age to the point where a lot of the equipment and infrastructures need attention. And on top of that, some other examples would be where we're looking at that there's some new or existing needs for things like the Goadwood Water Storage Tank, water reservoir refurbishments all over in Anchorage, where we're, you know, looking at doing one or two every couple of years, where, you know, re-coat them and things like that, and like I said, the pipe replacements. So alongside that, of course, we're looking at the model. Anson dug deep through all the different scenarios we needed to look at for the modeling and where we need to transport water, and if we're doing it well, and working with our Just Stop's Distribution Operations Group at the utility to make sure we're supporting the community needs and that our water quality is where it needs to be. And again, a couple of projects in Goadwood that are going on that, of course, people probably have heard about if they're in, in that arena, but if you haven't, you know, the well improvements and things like that that are going on. And then Eagle River with potential new reservoirs out there eventually for that type of capacity improvements. And then on the system optimization end, as the system ages and, you know, it builds out, a lot of what we'd be looking at is we have a lot of pressure zones within the system, you know, because we're a hilly terrain, we're not flat like some of the other areas that other communities. So we have a lot of pressure zones, so one of the things that we've been doing over the last decade is looking at ways to consolidate, maximize, and economize on how many of those facilities we really need. And also, we've installed a few turbines throughout the system, and there might be some more opportunities in the future to recover some of the extra head losses that we gained from coming from McLutna, and then inner ties and connections within the system. So where we're at is, like I said, we're in the review formal comment period. There's an online open house that's still available through the link on our webpage, through social media, a few other spots you can get at it. If you have any questions on how to access it, I'm not sure the link's live and what we sent you guys, but I think you can find it relatively easily and it should still be available, and you can make comments on there. But we are trying to finalize the plan early twenty-twenty, wrap up all the comments we get and integrate that into the plan.
This slide does say November fourteenth, but I know that is in the past. So if you still, it's, the website is still live and we will definitely still take, take comments.
So, yeah, basically, that's what we're here to do, is just say it's out there, we're open for questions, comments on the plan as you get into it, or if you have any. Like I said, I'm not sure that we have much time today for that, but we could do it. You know, I have my business card and whatnot, whenever you want. That's about where we're at.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Really quick question, hopefully. How long will you take comments if the fourteenth has a little asterisk? And you said something will be presented in January.
Yeah, we're gonna take comments all through, you know, what is today, the seventeenth? Through November, at least, so.
Yeah, we'll say the end of luck.
Yeah. Yeah, because we're meeting with some other groups as well this month. As usual, kind of gets spread out, trying to meet with everyone, so.
Question, have you received much feedback from, from Goadwood yet regarding either the, the potential new well placement, the water tank, or the extension of water service down through the mine roads?
I'm not directly on any of those projects specifically, but the project teams, they're at varying levels of completion on each one of the ones you're speaking to, like the well, or, you know, maybe the extension for sewer.
Yeah, the extension, the water extension.
Water and, yeah, sorry, what was that answer?
It's the water extension along Alaska Highway, down south.
Right. But each one of those projects has a design phase where we would solicit comments. And I know they, they've been working with the agencies at this point, like on the well, but not necessarily to the point where we even have a formal site selection.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know, I think Chief Weston asked a question as well, but I'll, I will ask one quickly first. If a project doesn't get included or mentioned in this master plan, does that change its status? Or can things still come along after that?
You mean like if it was in a prior plan and you don't?
If, if a project hasn't been identified yet, it comes up in a year or two, does not being included?
Yeah, so there's a capital improvement plan, a six-year plan, that also, it looks at the master plan, that's one of its guiding lights, let's say. But on top of that, we have business case evaluations and other means to bring in new information and new projects or new needs. Yeah.
And just one quick thing as well that goes, you mentioned this was, I think it's, it was the water plan, so does this include treatment as well? Or is it just water supply?
It doesn't look into the specifics of it, but it looks into the capacity, the supply scenarios.
Thank you.
Yeah, but not if you need to upgrade like a certain process. Yeah.
Either Chief Weston or Michelle, depending on your role.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm next door, it's super busy here tonight. I would just wanted, Michelle Weston, Fire Chief, Goadwood resident since ninety-six or seven. I wanted just to speak to the importance of the water line to extend down to the mine roads and lower Goadwood. You know, we have one of the most strategically important gas stations in Alaska, in South Central, and possibly all of Alaska in our, in our service area, but we have no water supply. So if that gas station goes, I think that would economically impact not only Goadwood residents, but all of South Central Alaska if the, if the gas station was gone. It does take a lot of extra staffing and equipment to run water shuttles in areas that don't have hydrants. So just, just reminder that hot water lines are important, and it's important to look after the existing community before building new communities or new areas in Goadwood. So I just want to mention that, to remember that, that it's important to look after the people that have been here before you extend new lines to new places in Goadwood, that there's other people that also deserve to have water hydrants. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, I have one more, if I may. I was reading the CW, CWPP, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and AWOB is of course mentioned in there. And in one of the maps regarding cisterns, would AWOB have anything to do with cistern placement in Goadwood?
I know one of the projects that we're recommending is a community watering point, is that emergency water. I have not yet reviewed that plan, that's on my list to do this week.
Okay, yeah, there are periods coming up.
But I do know that we have eight projects that is recommended in a pretty recent or soon time period of emergency watering point. I believe we haven't.
Wasn't that one of the grants?
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's.
Potential grant.
Yeah, and that located at the park station of sort of a more.
A water fill station.
Fill station.
Yeah, it was a water fill station, but cistern specific.
Yeah.
I mean, we're part of the players, of course, with any of the wildfire protection plans. I'm not specifically involved with that. But we do a lot of risk and resiliency assessments and work with other agencies, like Fire Department. We're actually gonna meet with them soon, and I'm sure that'll come up as well.
These are coinciding, on the plans and their goals, and their, their final wrapping it up.
Okay. Yeah, so.
So they have two specific locations.
Yeah, I can look into more what your question was, but I'm not.
That's fine.
Believe on that. Yeah.
Okay. Michelle, I don't know if your hand's up from before.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify what Brianna said. The CWPP, the consultants recommended two water supply areas, new water cisterns. One, although it, the way it's located, I think on the map is wrong, I think they meant in Old Goadwood. And then the other is in Upper Crow Creek Road outside of the fire service area to support up there. And that, both of those are different than replacing the well that's on the old fire station here next to our fire station.
Sure, okay. Okay, yeah, understood.
Thank you. Crystal, I think we'll take this as the last comment.
I was curious in regards to, I'm just looking online at the AWW master plan and see the Goadwood Water Supply Improvements and Goadwood Well Rehab in Year One, and then Goadwood Water Storage Tank in Year Two. My question is, I believe AWOB received two-point-five million in a grant, and wondering, is that two-point-five million planned to go towards those projects?
Any funding that we'd be securing for that grant would be going towards the well project, yes?
I think you already have it, the two-and-a-half million that was, it was gonna get used on the Holton Hills Road, and then it ended up not being able to be used there, so that it, it got, I was told that it was gonna be used for Goadwood Water and Sewer purposes. So the two-and-a-half million is gonna go towards these purposes now, is that correct?
I don't know about water and sewer and transfer from something else, but we've applied for, for forgivable loans and I think there is a grant from CDS that we were looking at getting for helping us to develop those sources. But regardless of that, I just want to state those are very important projects for the utility, regardless of trying to get more, you know, funding for it from outside sources.
If I can just go on to what Crystal was saying, I think that there was a grant of two-and-a-half million dollars that came from congressional direct.
CDS, that's what I'm saying.
That's right. And I believe your general manager in Assembly Meeting stated it was restricted to use in sewer, in wastewater systems within Goadwood. That's what I heard, so I may have misunderstood it, but that's what I heard him say.
So I know CDS.
We still have a question about exactly what is that going to? Maybe that's something you can find.
I can follow up with you, but there's CDS for well, it's either water or sewer usually, it wouldn't be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Having us.
Okay, we'll move on to reports now, start with legislative reports. Start online with Senator Geesel. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm not there in person, I had meant to come tonight and my day ran out on me. Yeah, I guess the most interesting thing that people are asking me about recently is the resignation of a couple of the state senators. There is a process going on where the districts now will put forward three names. The governor will choose a name and he'll send it forward to the Senate Republicans, all of the Senate Republicans, who will then either approve the name the governor sent forward or reject it. So that process will happen soon, it needs to be done by early December. Other things I'm hearing a lot about from constituents is the idea of daylight savings, eliminating it. I'm certainly a fan. The question is, what do we go to? Do we go to regular standard time, Alaska Standard Time, or Alaska Daylight Savings Time permanently? The federal government would allow the state to opt to Alaska Standard Time, but if we chose to go to Alaska Daylight Savings Time permanently, we would have to get congressional approval. So just another interesting issue, people can't agree on which one to choose. Certainly businesses have some opinions about that. They don't want to be too far in terms of time change from the East Coast. Another question I'm getting a lot about is solar panels on homes. We approved in legislation, and the Regulatory Commission of Alaska has put out guidelines for solar providers who want to sell their power into the utility. So there's guidelines for the business model itself and things like that. But what I'm getting asked about is citizens with solar panels on their roofs selling excess power to the utility. So again, this is a subject that we're discussing. To me, it's the difference between the net model, net metering model and the net billing model. With the net metering model, the home, the person, the resident that had that extra electricity from their solar panels would be reimbursed from the utility at the residential rate. Under net billing, they would be reimbursed at the commercial rate or the wholesale rate, so obviously less. The other thing with, with selling power to the utility is what about the people who don't have solar panels? They'll be affected. The reason they'll be affected is utilities have operating expenses. They have boards that run them that have expenses, they have management teams, they have, they have, they have employees that go out and clear the lines when trees fall on them during storms and put the poles back up and all of those kinds of things. All of those costs just to do business. People that are selling power back to the utility are waived of paying those management costs. So those, in those costs will fall on people that don't have solar panels. In other words, it's cost shifting to people who don't have the solar panels and, and aren't selling power back to utility. So for me, it's, it's a, it's a conversation I'm willing to enter into. We'll certainly be having that with the utilities themselves. And I'll just end there, just mentioning that this Saturday I'll be in Goadwood at The Grind Coffee Shop from nine to ten AM. So happy to talk to anyone there if you'd like to turn out. Thanks very much, Mike.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Senator Geesel, Brian Burnett here. Question for you regarding the Crow Creek Road Ownership Discussions. Is that gonna be a topic when you're down here at The Grind, I assume? Any updates on it this evening?
Well, no, I have no updates on it. But I will certainly refresh that discussion with the municipality. At the last point of collaboration, there was some progress being made with the municipality. I will freshen up that information and have it ready for Saturday. I don't have a refresh on it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to, thank you very much, Senator. We'll move on to Representative Holland, who's here in the first.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Holland, Representative, House District Nine. So I appreciate a few minutes of time tonight. A couple of things here, just in terms of priority items we've been working on recently. We've been put together letters that have gone out to Department of Transportation asking for some advice and some ideas on how to deal with the critical roads that lead up to isolated areas, might be Aliaska Highway, we've got a couple in Anchorage. Trying to look at the right-ofways and what we do to plan for those roads in order to operate in case we have a wildfire along those in an isolated area. It could also be like Crow Pass Road where you've got people up at the end of the road, and if there's ever a fire, the question is, are we done to prepare that right-ofway and manage that in a way that will allow people to get in and out without problems in there? And similarly, we've got a letter out to Department of Public Safety looking at the question of building codes and some of the state fire marshal responsibilities related to wildfires. It's interesting to me, as somebody who's spent the last four years really learning a lot about wildfire-related risks at the state fire marshal's office, doesn't have any responsibility for wildfire-related activities. That's really a department, or excuse me, a division of forestry who, you know, identify the fuel loads and fight the fires, but not necessarily to deal with the built infrastructure that interfaces into the forest and whatnot. So working on that, and also working on some of the renewable energy legislation. Senator Geesel already kind of touched on that, so I won't belabor it other than just to note that we do have a net meter bill that we're working on right now. We're also working on updating to the Renewable Portfolio Standard. And then I have another bill we're working on related to the utility management of their right-ofways and vegetation in that right-ofway. But in particular, exploring some of the ways utilities could do more to partner with the folks that own land adjacent to those right-ofways, whether that's state park, a city park, or private property, to look at ways that we can not only ensure that the land right in the right-ofway, typically now it's kind of a canyon because they clean that out pretty well, but then we've got trees on either side of that canyon that are still exposed to the line, so working on that. And the Standard Time Bill that Senator Geesel mentioned has been a really interesting. I did not try to get into the legislature to work on a time bill, but I got asked by some constituents to, to move this ahead. So I've got the Alaska Standard Time Bill, and there's two other bills that would be, bills that would put us on to daylight. Uh, and there's two other bills that would be, uh, bills that would put us on to daylight savings time. It's been very educational. If you get a chance, I would encourage you to go to the website, rep.kyleholland.com where I've got some history. It's fascinating to see that before, uh, Alaska was, um, purchased by the U.S. Alaska used to be on the other side of the Dateline. So this used to be the other day. And all sorts of interesting little tidbits for you if you're kind of a history nerd like I am. But a fascinating topic in terms of the different issues of people's concern about who align more with the sun and the health that is associated with that alignment, circadian rhythms, or do we have the longer evenings? I'll leave it at that for now. Um, perhaps as of course, uh, we're looking at, um, information on projects you've been through before. Um, I think I want to finish up tonight though, and come back to CWPP. I know you've got an agenda, so I won't belabor this too much. But just for folks who are looking at this, the key thing I want to encourage you to look at is that there's a special planning unit section. And you really want to jump straight into the Girdwood section of that to take a look at it. And I do want to point out a couple of key things for you to watch out for here. One is, um, they haven't recognized, and I think it's an opportunity to recognize that you've got an airfield in Girdwood that could be particularly important in the case of wildfire response. There's also some issues around these isolated roads that are not covered in it. A lot of issues related to, um, coordinated efforts. But the thing I want to really highlight is that most of our work in the Anchorage Bowl around wildfire and the wildland urban interface uses some traditional approaches to firewise related, um, uh, buffering around homes. Now, when I look at the Girdwood area and the way the homes are really in the forest, um, if we were to apply the typical boilerplate firewise approach, you would not have the Girdwood you have today. And I think we have a very special and unique challenge to look at how the area here will be. Um, the, the fuel loads will be, will be, uh, perhaps thinned out in areas, but how you want to actually develop some of the neighborhood areas so that they are a little more resilient to wildfires. But I don't think you can use the cookie cutter approach that we'd use in other areas that have traditional white spruce and, um, other trees. So I think it'd be interesting to work on this. Um, I would love to have some more time down the road to dive into this. I know we have a very short comment period. I wish it was longer because the issues out here are particularly important. But I know Chief Westman is, uh, looking at this and she's given me some more input on what we might do there. So I think I will leave it at there and, uh, see if there are any questions and appreciate a couple of minutes of your time tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thanks so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, we'll move on to assembly members. Do we have either Zach Johnson or Keith McCormick online? I can't see the full list, unfortunately. You not see them? Okay. So in that case, we'll move on to Anchorage School Board. Uh, I saw Andy Holloman earlier.
Hello. Yep. Thank you very much. Um, not too much has changed since the last time we were here. Uh, Tuesday night, there will be a vote on, uh, eliminating two neighborhood schools. Lake Otis and Fire Lake out in Eagle River and possibly repurposing them, uh, for Rooka Shula and, um, Eagle Academy out in Eagle River. Um, it's been discussed and I'll, we'll put, uh, the school board address in the chat. If anyone does want to send a message, it goes to all school board members before that vote happens. Um, the other main thing I did just want to touch on, people may have seen, uh, a little bit of a desktop about a flyer that we distributed to some students that had a copy of the constitution and the declaration. And it had a disclaimer sticker on it that said, these don't represent the viewpoints of the Anchorage School District. Uh, it was a flyer published by Hillsdale College and there is some editorial comment in it about the role of government, about, uh, what a great place Hillsdale is to go to school and some other things. Uh, it's a nice little flyer. It does give students their own personal copy of the constitution and the declaration. Um, ASD is perfectly on board with that, but anytime someone does put, uh, their editorial spin on it and we send it home with students. And this was, my understanding is at the request of a community member, uh, if it does have opinion in it, we do put a disclaimer on it. So, uh, despite how it's portrayed by some people, we don't have any argument with the constitution. We think it's great. Other than that, I don't really have anything new to report to you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the board? Seeing any or from the community? Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move on to, um, HLBAC. Do we have a HLBAC report? Didn't, didn't see till online. Okay. Thank you.
Forty-sixth.
Okay. Well, obviously we're in the process of making comments on the draft annual work plan. That's the major issue currently happening. But in that case, we'll move on to supervised reports. Uh, I will start with Kelly. Do you have any report?
Actually, just took a bite.
Um, sorry, I can be bothered.
No, I don't have any, um, huge reports other than coffee with the cop this Saturday from 10 to 12 at the Grind.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Uh, I don't have anything that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Nothing from me.
I would add from the item on the agenda for the CWPP to encourage and urge residents and citizens and community members to go online and fill out their survey because that is what they'd like to hear from, from individuals that way. And then they would like to hear from group organizations through the, the methods they've established. So please take time to just go fill out the survey probably pretty quick.
Thank you. And, uh, I also don't have anything, uh, that isn't covered elsewhere on the agenda. Okay. Moving on to item number three, committee updates. Um, do we have any updates from any committees?
This is Crystal Hope.
Hi, Crystal.
Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. And, um, I think the most important discussion, um, is HLB and the HLB draft and the plan, which is on the agenda. So hold my comments until then.
Thank you. Um, now move on to standing reports. Um, the proposed Girdwood Development Report, that's in the packet. There are a couple of updates, um, which are highlighted on the most significant ones being, actually, I think I just saw this evening, just before the meeting, that, uh, the Holton Hills, um, condition used planned unit development, I think has been admitted. Um, so we probably have a date for when the hearing will be scheduled in front of, uh, planning and zoning board. Uh, the other one we've added is, um, Aliaska North Edition. Uh, there's, as you've probably seen in the Delodge parking lot, there's some clearing work. My understanding is they have a permit to do clearing and site prep. Um, and I think stubbing services, but they don't have a construction permit yet. Um, and then there are a couple of other updates, uh, throughout that. And if there's any questions or notes, we can touch them. I think probably everything else in here, we're covering elsewhere in the, um, in today's meeting, or we don't have an update. Is there anything anybody else wants on the board to add to the standing reports? Oh, okay. In that case, we'll move on to item number five, service provider reports. Let's start with Fire Department, please. Please, Chief. Go ahead. Chief Weston.
Hi there. Hi there. Sorry about that. Um, I just want to talk about, uh, our October incidents. Um, we did have four fatalities that we responded to. Uh, one was a cardiac arrest in the Double Muskie. Uh, and then, uh, we had a car accident in Portage that was found in the morning that was, had three fatalities, um, of Whittier residents. And I wanted to share that, you know, those type of accidents are incredibly, um, sad and tragic and also, you know, affect the crews. Um, but what we were able, when we got there is, as we looked at the car, um, amongst the fatalities, we saw a little tail wag and trapped in the car, um, was that dog which you see there. And so the crew worked, um, for about 40 minutes to be able to, uh, get the vehicle in a state that they could get the dog out. And then we transported the dog or, you know, by, um, by the Chief Mobile, uh, into town to pet emergency. Uh, and we're currently fostering the dog and working with APD until it can be returned to a relative of the uh, family members. So, um, I, I just wanted to share that, you know, it was a terrible and tragic accident that we went on. Um, but there was, uh, a small, little one-year-old life that was saved out of that. So, um, I wanted to share that. Uh, and then, um, we, it's been really busy for us. We've, uh, responded to 24 EMS calls. Uh, we went to two MVA, uh, vehicle accidents. We've had seven alarms, which were a mix of fire and CO alarms. We had one recreational evaluation on the mud flats. We had one gas leak. We had, uh, supported a high angle boat, boat access, uh, injury back country on Portage Lake. Uh, we had one CO call, uh, out of the fire service area up to Crow Creek Road. And then, um, I wanted to share that we, you know, when we started a number of years ago, putting in AEDs around the community and linking them to Pulse Point, um, and training our CERT members to do, uh, CPR and, uh, value the importance of AEDs. Um, we did the other day in October have, um, one of those AEDs deployed and used on a cardiac arrest event. So, um, it's just, just a reminder of the importance of knowing where the closest AED is, um, getting registered on Pulse Point, um, and, uh, refreshing your CPR. And then next slide, please. Uh, I, I believe we've done a great job so far in this meeting of talking already about the importance of meeting the, uh, timeline for comments on the Community Welfare Protection Plan. Um, uh, can we, you know, uh, looking at it from a Girdwood centric lens, um, we can always have more Girdwood in a municipality plan. So, um, you know, my advocacy on this plan is for, uh, more wildfire funding. We don't have any dedicated wildfire funding. We've managed to do a lot, um, without funding, but we could do so much more if we actually had dedicated funding. So, um, I, uh, welcome everybody's comments in putting a Girdwood voice and a turning an arm community voice in the municipality of Anchorage Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And then just, uh, thank you to Brianna for, uh, sharing that photo with us of the crew, uh, a couple of nights ago. I'm working on one of our, uh, trail, uh, trail patient, a patient that was on the trail. So, uh, any questions for me?
Questions from the board? Yeah, from the community? Okay. I don't see any questions, uh, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll now move on to police. I see Chief Ashay there online.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I have, I submitted bi-monthly report for, uh, Whittier Police, uh, for the Girdwood Service Area. It's total approximately 176 calls for service. Most of our calls in both communities are generally going to be security checks. Um, that Whittier had a total of 115 calls, 12 of which was fire, you best friend to Whittier side. So those are breakdown of the calls for service. Uh, last month, we had, uh, ice cream with the kids over there at the ice cream shop. It was a great event. All our officers came. Uh, that was also a very busy day. Uh, luckily we had all, uh, full, uh, contingent of officers there during that event. Uh, our officers assisted with the, uh, uh, rescue that was of the, um, Girdwood, Whittier side of, uh, the, the Portage Pass. Uh, that's Chief, uh, Weston discussed a little bit, as well as, uh, during that same time, during that same instant in Whittier, Girdwood area right on the line there. We also had a burglary in progress in, uh, um, Girdwood where two officers, I was also there, was able to, uh, respond extremely quickly and apprehend the, uh, subject. Um, that we, but still maintain our traffic presence in both communities as well as, uh, during downtimes, officers continually do, um, security checks in both communities. We have an event coming up, uh, next, uh, this coming Saturday at the Grind, which is Coffee with the Cops. I'd like to thank Tommy for, again, and the, uh, G Vos for, uh, help arranging that. So we look forward to meeting, uh, more community members this, uh, Saturday in Girdwood. Uh, that if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing any, any from the community? I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you very much. We will now move on to, thank you. We'll now move on to, um, roads and recreation.
Uh, yes. Uh, good evening. Um, uh, first off with parks, uh, we've got snow, so that means, uh, we've got, uh, grooming up and going. We do appreciate all our volunteers out there getting the 5K in shape. And, uh, they did such a good job that, uh, APU, UAA and UAF all came down for time trials on Saturday and raced, uh, before, I think maybe APU, maybe another one or after international events. So, so that was great to see the, the course in action and, uh, all the work that took place to get it done, uh, is working out. So that's great. Um, we do give a reminder from the Girdwood Trails Committee that, uh, this snow came in and the ground really wasn't frozen. So we ask people to be aware when they're out there, they're starting to push out into the meadows and their foot's all of a sudden covered in mud, uh, maybe to go back and, uh, wait for things to either get a little thicker out there with snow coverage. Um, this is pretty much sugar now, which fell in the ground. Um, and we got a little bit of wet stuff today, but we still need a good 24 inches, which would actually be desirable cloth, um, out there to really pack in the trails. So just be aware, your impact can be still, uh, uh, significant, uh, if you're stepping through the snow into the, the wet mud. Um, and, uh, uh, the Girdwood, uh, Trails Master Plan or the Girdwood Parks Master Plan is moving along nicely. Uh, we have a event coming up on the 19th with advisory committee. We'll meeting with them and showing them initial concepts from all the public feedback we had. And then we have a, a large open, uh, public meeting on December 16th. Um, where people can come in and give their input on the different concepts, uh, for the different park, uh, future planning. Uh, so that's moving along. And if you'd like to keep up the date, girdwoodparksplan.com, um, is where you can see all the latest updates on where that's at, uh, in that area. And a huge shout, shout out to Paul Cruz. He's just been an outstanding volunteer for us this year and he helped us with snow blowing in Town Square. Uh, last week we got him trained up. So he's going to help us with, uh, snow removal and, uh, and those things going into the winter. So we do appreciate when he's around. He does give us a lot of help in that area. So, um, uh, as always, uh, we keep everything up to date on the website, uh, thanks to Margaret and the social media. Um, and then, uh, um, as well, we're working through our recreational grants right now for our trails, wrapping up into year, um, and getting ready for next year as we move forward there. Um, a quick update, uh, within the report, uh, we'll go into all the details here. You can plenty of time to read this, but uh, there's nice links in here, the different, uh, updates going on within, uh, the different areas. So you can see there. Um, and a quick update on the police contract, uh, right now we are waiting, uh, on, uh, both city, uh, Whittier Council approval and then assembly approval. Uh, we did have to, uh, rewrite a new contract for the two years because of the increase for the dispatch costs. So that has to get approval through city Whittier Council, which they're going to consider tomorrow night. And then we will start the process with the assembly and they will, uh, make consideration as well. Um, so we hope that we can work those in tandem so that they are approved by middle of December. And then we, uh, will move right along into the new year with the new contract. So, um, so we'll see how that goes along. But we want to keep you that we're moving through that process of approvals now at this point. Um, let's person in. Uh, switching over the roads, uh, we did get our first dump, uh, significant dump of 20 inches there, uh, last Thursday. Uh, crews worked through most of the night, uh, just getting, uh, going on it in the first initial snowfall. Everything went pretty well. Uh, the contractor had all the equipment, uh, in shape and ready to go. So, uh, the response was pretty seamless. Um, and then they were back out this morning. They'll be able to back out tomorrow doing some touch up from the snow that came down, uh, just last night. And, um, and so they're off to a good run. We have about the same amount of crew returning from last year. So they're very familiar with the service area. So, uh, that makes it real easy, uh, for that transition to winter. Um, major projects, uh, we are moving forward on the Ruane Fish, uh, Colbert. Uh, we finished writing the RFP and we, uh, working with our consultant Jacobs to confirm the, um, uh, that we meet all the federal guidelines. Since this is EP grant, we have to make sure our, our, our RFP, uh, con- conforms with the EP, the federal requirements for the grant, uh, which we have, and we have it ready to go. So in the coming, uh, week or so, we will be getting that RFP out in the street for design and engineering, um, services. And then we will spend the winter here, uh, going through the design process and getting together bid package for construction. Uh, we, if things go really well, we may be able to do it in 26 or, or construction, but most likely 27 because we want to give enough procurement time uh, for the contractor to get set. Um, at this point, we probably won't have design done until spring. Um, so it, it won't be a, a good bidding atmosphere. So we'll probably wait and bid it next year. Um, that way plenty of time because it will be a box culvert of some sort and it'll take quite a while. Either have that delivered or constructed. Either have that delivered or constructed, depending on how, what it's made out of. So we'll figure that out through the process. And then the Winter Creek Trail Bridge at Glacier Creek, we have a complete construction bid package ready. And the US Forest Service has returned to work. So we are working through with them on some final agreements with them for construction inspection and then eventual takeover ownership and long-term inspection. So we're working through that process and we're trying to get on their priority list as much as they have to catch up from being off for almost five weeks. So we're working through that. And then as soon as we feel we are comfortable with that, we still have a bit of a projected funding gap according to our engineer estimate. But we feel that engineer estimate is very, very, very conservative. And the only real way to know what's going on is to put this on the street and find out what the atmosphere is right now with the way raw materials are and bidding. So we're hoping we can still get a January bid out. And we'll be working that over the next month here between our agreements with service and then our purchasing and what we can accomplish to make that all work. So, so we hope to have that out and that would help us towards a construction in 26. So we're working along through that process right now. Our contractor is catching up on invoicing for a very busy summer. So we still have some bowls there, we're working out details. May was a very busy month for us with construction, so and maintenance. And so the contractor and myself are working through some details on that. And then we should see August and September start to roll in as well. So those will be coming in, but we did get about four invoices from our slower months that came in. So we're well within where we are and we're well within budget for all our budgets. We're looking pretty good for this time of year. And so we'll be, we'll be catching up. A lot of these has to do with transfers of capital funds and then payouts for different things. So right now, we'll be seeing a lot of expenses being calculated or accounted for as we move through it. But budgets are where they should be for this time of year. So, so yeah, that's a quick overview of parks and road and everything else. So if there's any questions, let me know.
Comment, thank you very much for filling all the mud pit stations. Nice to be skiing or biking or wherever and seeing them all. This is for that easier step for everyone who needs one for their dog.
Gotcha. Yeah, if you see any of those out there, or you see, we tend to find cans that be full all of a sudden, so you can just give us a call and we'll try to tackle it. Anything else out there, we respond pretty quick to it.
No, you can answer this. But there's, when you access the lower end of the road from the dump, that area with rain gets just full of water along the fence. Is there any plan to somehow work with that flooding area with how the woods are and the creek and everything, whenever any?
It's on our project next year to raise that portion. It's a low spot in the trail. We always knew it was going to be that. So we're a problem, we're going to look at that. We're also going to hike back in the woods and just see if there's something that's, it's a ponding issue that happens there. And it probably could be relieved if we open. There's been a lot of tree fallback there over the years, so it could be a relief there that allows that water to move back towards the creek.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, then we'll move on to the library, Anchorage Public Library Report. That's in the packet.
Yes, it's in the packet. There's a couple things, you can see here, calendar events coming up with the Girdwood Library. Pretty active almost every day, though. And then more details on the different things, so lots of stuff going on.
Good to speak to you that's real quickly, well, I was going to make it a public comment, but since we have that all the way up anyway. I talked to Caterina about this a little bit, and she asked that I draw attention to the AARP scams and fraudulent things on December 19th and also the snowflint craft on December 20th. But what she didn't ask me to do, but I really feel compelled to do, is point out that she, they had a civil rights program on October 27th that turned out to be amazing. It was weirdly humorous, you would never expect. So that's the kind of thing that I, I hope that they can bring back and we can, we can spread the news about more, because it was, it was absolutely fantastic. And if anybody wants, I did get the free comic books that they, so there are free graphic novels, actually, I guess they're called, about civil rights in Alaska, and I have a whole handful of them, if anybody would like.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments on the library report? Some material there. Okay, so we will now move on to public comment. Person suffering, public comment, must state their full name and location. Public comments limited three minutes per person. It must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Does anyone want to make public comment tonight? Not seeing anyone online, not seeing anyone in the room. Last call. Okay, so we'll move on to all business. Start with item number six, to finish off the vote on amounts for GBSA nonprofit grant funding. We have the sheet up here on the screen. So it's Kelly.
I think, yep, Kelly, we need yours. And just a reminder, the total should add up to 22, 500.
If my fatigue brain did good math today. For TAM, I have 25, challenge 10,000. Art Camp 7775 and Radio 2225.
Okay, sorry, I got off there.
Art Camp 7775.
77. 75, okay.
Radio 2225.
2225. Something to us. Hey.
Good job.
Good. We got your numbers. Yeah, this thing's giving us some issues. So we'll work it through and get these averages figured out, but we appreciate the numbers there. And we will get that sorted out and report to the grantees.
I think we do, we're supposed to make a formal motion, so maybe we can come back to this when you have them.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number seven. GBS Resolution 50th Anniversary, the MOA Unification. Over to Brian to start it.
So Mike and I got together to talk about this. What do you say? Not a project, it's a promotion being put together by the Municipality of Anchorage, celebrating the creation of the Anchorage Municipality and all of the great things that being a municipality bring on. And we did our best to bring a Girdwood perspective to the action of forming a municipality from a greater Anchorage area borough. And the positive impacts and some of the less than positive impacts involved with being part of the municipality.
And then what I, what I, if I can follow on with some comments. One of the differences between this and the version we had last month was following some further discussion. It's not just looking back, it's also looking forward. So we ended up focusing, most of the whereas is the same. We added, we changed the title slightly so to include the looking ahead. And then I think what I really want people to look at closely is the, is the therefore section. Because this is much more looking, it's a, it's a congrats and then looking forward to things we believe report for Girdwood now and going forwards within the municipality. So we put a full list of six things in here. I'm not sure I agree with all of them, but they're here to discuss. So the first one is basically celebration and acknowledgement of the unification experiment, while kind of pointing out that really it was meant to solve problems in the urban core, not so much the more distant communities outside of the core. The second one is to basically remind everybody, we actually have something in the charter that Brian has been very good at finding and emphasizing, to secure the maximum local control of local affairs. And I think we can probably all agree that that may not be what the municipality is actually achieving. So we would emphasize a focus on that, especially basically allowing the maximum power out at, at the community level, particularly communities such as Girdwood, where we have a governmental body. And then we put in two things, two changes, which were actually, you know, we'd already supported and in the process of coming forward, which is the ability to initiate text amendments. And, sorry, that's the one we have included. Then the other one was the possibility of making Girdwood a municipal department, which would give us the, which would give Girdwood 30 service area the ability to manage land within the municipality. Number five, I think this is mostly your word, so if you want to nuance number five.
Well, we were, we, we were, we would like to see the way our relationship with the Assembly is treated and elevated, if you will, and becoming more of a partner in the matters and concerns of Girdwood.
And then the last one, and we put this in there, I'm not sure this is a good or a bad idea, but the possibility of a future advisory vote by Girdwood on how we, how we achieve that greater self-determination within the borough or some other local government structure. We'll throw this out there as it stands and then see comments.
First of all, the last, no, number six and number five too, but number six, thank you both for all of your work on this for the last two months. Really great job. And is five and six referring to number four or statement?
Not necessarily, no. They kind of stand somewhat separately, although they're related. So there is no, sorry, I should also say there is not really a time pressure on this. We want to make sure it's in front of everyone. If people want to go in and sort of actually make a decision later, that's fine. If you want to make a decision tonight and discuss it further, I think that's fine.
So, if I may, I'm super excited to see this expansion of the therefor's. I finally got to look at this document a little bit today and I'm thrilled, especially actually with five and six. I'm not sure if it's clear that maybe four, five and six are working together or working in tandem or in opposition, because I don't know if that works. So it would be interesting to hear the board's thoughts about that. And also my, my own personal thoughts were that we could maybe tighten up the whereas's a little bit. I found some super strong ones in there. And again, I can tell, you can tell just by the number of words, how much work went into this. But I know that a lot of thought went into this as well. So I had like some friendly edit suggestions on the whereas's, but I do think that the critical part is the therefor's. I'm super excited to see it expanded, really excited to see five and six. Not sure how four plays in there or how to, how to, how to explain like, or how to clarify that we, the overriding interest is in increasing autonomy. If I may, if I'm correct about that.
Kelly?
I would just generally agree with that. I, the where for, the whereas's are really long. And I mean, I think they're important, but I was just like, okay. But yeah, I really love the emphasis on self-determination and the bold. I was like, ooh, I'm on board. I really, I like how bold it is. And I think, I think the bolder we are and just like naming it, the more powerful it ultimately lands. And I mean, we should just acknowledge that like the whereas's invite scanning through, because they get a so yeah, if we can power pack those a little bit. I mean, the whole, yeah, I agree, the whole point is that there, actually, some of the whereas's, they'll really point out the, the good reference material and the case for paying attention to us. But yeah, but yeah, I think fantastic work and thank you for that.
I did, I did end up making a list of the whereas's I thought were particularly strong. And then it just thought we might be able to consolidate some of the others if they're open to. I think it amounts to editorial edits, not editing for meaning, particularly because it's on the whereas's. The therefore is where the meaning resides.
I can speak briefly to, to number four. So three and four are kind of relatively short-term tactical things. Just that we, we have kind of some bigger, a lot bigger issues in sort of two and definitely in five and six. Three and four are much, much more sort of short-term. Three in particular is just one thing that's gone in the way many times. I know in terms of short-term rental, for example, able to push anything forward. We can ask Assembly members, we can ask Planning Department, we can ask the administration, but we can't actually initiate anything, even in our own land use. So number three is a very short-term thing. Hopefully, we've already passed a resolution of support. Hopefully, we will actually see that ordinance in the very near future. Or is the, it's within the current structure, but we've hit the, we've hit this roadblock. We have a, we have a service area power of housing, support for housing and economic development. But just due to the, the details of how we are structured within the municipality, we can't manage land. We can't have management responsibility for land. That's basically going to end up being other departments or HLP. And we know that HLP structurally has a set of sort of restrictions and processes. We do not necessarily prioritize the needs of Girdwood. So four would be a potential step to deal with the land management issue. Again, it's relatively short-term, relatively tactical. And it doesn't, it's not a long-term solution for us, but it's something that maybe solves some of the problems in the key. But I think, you know, five is really there, five and two are really the key ones.
May I ask a question about four?
Yeah.
If we are made a municipal department, does that necessitate an additional employee position?
I don't think so, but I don't know. I mean, Chugak Eagle River is a municipal department. But then they have different service areas. So exactly how this works is, that's why it's kind of a consider. We don't know, I don't know what the mechanics would be. We haven't really seriously discussed that. But if the, if this is a direction the board wants to go, then I think we can, we can, you know, use this as kind of a statement of goal and then have more detailed discussions and find out what that really means. And if the details turn out to be not to our advantage, we don't have to execute on it.
May I add a follow-up to that?
Absolutely.
I think that that is, this is interesting, because it's, it's kind of turned into a policy paper of sorts. And I think that if we end up passing something like this, it allows us, that, that gives us the justifications we need to add this to future agendas with the MOA. So as we go into future joint meetings, we can say, okay, we passed this resolution and so, or whatever. And so now let's talk about number four, right? Or where are our steps to get to these various points? But it is bold, but?
I'd say that part of the discussion around number four and number five is that when we can come to the table as, as being able to manage some land, it elevates our status as a partner with the municipality and dictates that, that we need to be treated more as a trusted partner.
If we wanted to move forward with this tonight, I was initially thinking, before everyone had all their thoughts and points about number four, I was thinking of keeping half of number four. But if Eagle River is a municipal department, then I'm okay with that whole statement. And then I think the whereas's were mostly similar the last two months.
It's, they haven't changed.
So we've had this for three months and now, but only today. I know I only saw the new part today. So whatever the body agrees for bringing this back or feel comfortable. I've worked a lot on this and each of these points has been come up for a few years and brought us here. But they are bold statements, which is kind of necessary sometimes.
Just a little bit on the narrative, I think as we, as we started it and we're looking at the history, it's easy just to see a series of complaints and justified complaints. So part of the goal of strengthening up, up discussion last week, I mean, and this is a lot of detail, part of the justification for, for making the therefore more substantial is to really push forward and say this is what we want. Not just, you know. Making the therefore more substantial is to really push forward and say this is what we want, not just, you know. Who, we've had bad things happen in the past, but this is the future. So I'll let you speak up.
I have a question related to that. Topic about, or the idea about Eagle River being in a municipal apartment. Are you saying that? That Eagle River service area is a municipal apartment?
Not quite. There is a odd relationship between the departments and the service areas. And. I think there are differences that once solution for Eagle River, we would probably not do exactly the same thing. But the point of this is just, the goal would be to the ability, the ability to manage Girdwood land with a focus on Girdwood's needs. Not the way it's currently done through H L B, which by. By their structure has to be for the whole of the municipality. And if there are advantages financially. To the H L B fund, but it's a deficit of Girdwood, that's fine under H L B. H L B does not have a requirement to make sure the benefits are focused from the area of land itself. If something was done, if something's managed by the service area, then we obviously can have that focus. So it's a, it would be a distinct structure probably from the way that Eagle River does it, but this is. You know, we've been told that we need to be a department in order to have any land management. Direct, the ability to direct the management of land. So that would be a step to do that. But really. That would be a step to achieve the second, the second part of the sentence, which is the goal.
This would be for land that's not managed by roads or parks and rec.
Yes.
So if it was used for the housing economy.
Yeah, which it currently is not in, within another department.
Correct. Okay.
Because the municipality doesn't have a community, you know, a community, a community's department as it used to.
That's just it.
And if it was sticky to just to strike after organization and then allowing it to manage its own land. So whoever interprets this, it's still adjusting the administrative organization.
You're right.
That was the one thing I.
Yeah, it's just a, that's a tactical, that's the thing that looks most likely, but really it's about the goal.
Sorry, Brianna, can you say that one more time?
Just to strike the after organization. To make or without a municipal department, strike that and keep the rest. Because that's the goal is allowing us. Or allowing Girdwood to manage its land. That's not what Kyle just asked. Without getting extremely specific. But it's still shifting the organizational structure in the minutes of the administration.
So you, we would strike the municipal department as a particular step?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it can still be in there. I mean, that could be where we end up, but we're not, we're not declaring that down.
We're doing this tonight.
So how would it read then?
To consider adjusting the municipal administrative organization. Allowing Girdwood to manage land within our valley owned by the municipality.
It might need some slight tweaks. Yes, and so we take out, we take out the, we take out the specific reference to a municipal department because there might be something else.
There might be different.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Can I, can I ask, do you, is there a, sorry?
I was just gonna say, I would actually say potentially making Girdwood a municipal department. Because if that is what we do think is, I, I would add that just as a potentially so that it's in there.
Okay.
Rather than strike it completely. Because we aren't necessarily explicit, make us a department, but that does seem at this juncture the most compelling. Vehicle. And I think it's worth calling it out so that somebody doesn't read that and be like. You know what I mean? Like grounded in something so that they understand that we're actually thinking about it. So I like that reference, but maybe less explicit by this point.
So just before I come to you, we don't have a motion on the table. I'm just trying to get a sense of the body of. We're, we're, we're starting to wordsmith, which is fine if we're going to act on it. But if we're not going to act on it tonight, perhaps we should just get the general points done and then push it to a later meeting, or we can act on it tonight. I'm fine whatever the body wants to do. If anyone wants to move, we pass this resolution. Do so. If not, can someone move a postponement perhaps?
I'll allow that we pass it.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Now I'll let you.
As we are wordsmithing in relation to number four, I mean, the point on number four. Is managing the land, not necessarily the vehicle for managing it. So. I'm fine with however we smith it around as long as managing the land remains in bold.
Are there any changes to any of the other therefor's that anyone would like to see? A suggestion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to modify number four to read, to consider adjusting the municipal administration organization. Allow such, to allow Girdwood to manage the land within, well. Okay, to consider adjusting the municipal administrative organization. To allow Girdwood to manage land within the Girdwood Valley owned by the municipality, comma, potentially making Girdwood Valley a municipal, municipal department.
Perhaps, for example, by making Girdwood a municipal department. It's the same thing, I think.
Yeah, I, I like that we're possibly better. So that's my question. Potentially rather.
It's the same, it's the same meaning.
Yeah.
I'll second, but then would like to ask a question just from basically will the by, I know that we've had this for a while. I know we don't want to hash it out indefinitely. I sure would like to tighten up the there or the whereas's now to reflect, to make sure that they're all building towards our therefor's. Like, yes, we've had these same whereas's, but we have a new set of conclusions. And so. Typically, the way this works in the editing process is you go back and make sure you're building your case, editing for meaning essentially. However, maybe it doesn't matter that much, right? We do have a lot, we're a little wordy on the whereas's, but maybe it doesn't matter. So I guess I'd like to hear from the board, like. Do we care or are we more interested in the time and busting this thing out? Because I could go either way.
I can go either way.
I would also be there ways. I think we're all in agreement, chiming. And then. Then it would be all tighter if you got a chance to look at the whereas's and see. And that is term, say, if you took rescinded the motion or we just have a new motion to respond to the next meeting. And we're all still in agreement.
I just would rather hear from Brian before I rescind the motion. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Taking it down, then I'll rescind the motion.
All right, in that case, I'll move that we postpone this until next month.
Next month or our next meeting. We potentially have a special meeting on. Today, I think, though.
Oh, we're gonna get this editing done on Wednesday?
Possible. It's also possible we don't. Next month is fine.
Is that okay?
I'll second the next month motion. And thank everyone for the discussion.
So we have a motion in front of us to postpone to next month. I will just offer. The opportunity for anyone in the community to make any comments now before we vote on that.
I wonder if, I wonder if Glenn Elps has issued any sort of a statement.
Don't think so. See anything. Amanda?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm really excited to see the full verbiage when this first arrived on the agenda. Had some pretty heavy thoughts towards it. See innovation not being good to hold Girdwood. So I'm really excited to see that you get the depth done. So thank you for putting a lot of time into it. My, my one suggestion beyond number three. Is that the review body allowing it to initiate, I haven't removed the word initiate. I think that we have the right to make changes to our own policy that governs our lands, which should be. Be a bit more specific and call it, you know, twenty one point oh nine with a section. I would just say review body allowing, you know, amendments to title twenty one. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Crystal?
I'll, I'll agree. I think it should be titled twenty one, chapter nine, spell that specifically, so that it's not, we're trying to make. Changes to all of twenty, title twenty one, but specifically the Girdwood chapter. And then on item four, I'm finding a lot of this discussion obviously very interesting because this is the. One of the topics that I'm most interested in and focused on for the last several years. One comment would be, I have no idea how much it might cost to shift that transition from what the structure we have now to. To a department. And is that an increase in the taxpayer, you know, expenses? It's definitely something that we should be made aware of before making a declaration that Girdwood should be a department. I definitely am in favor of Girdwood being able to manage lands in the Girdwood Valley. And, you know, period. I'm also slightly worried that this statement might get in the way of any other. Nonprofit work to be done in hopes that this might come to reality because. I know that I waited for about a year and a half to get the legal determination from the muni that the. The service area wasn't able to hold land. So it's like we could set down that road and. You know, get, not get anywhere either. So I would hate to stop progress in, in. In attempt of maybe being hopeful that this might become a department and then therefore might be able to hold land. It's just like, just hoping that this doesn't become a roadblock to potential progress. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have a motion in front of us and seconded for postponement next month. I'll do this by assent. I think we only have four people.
She stepped out to use the rest.
Given that the, I think Jennifer actually seconded it, so let's say, oh, she moved it, sorry. So let's say it's a yes. I'll take this by assent unless there's any disagreement. Okay, let's move this to next month then. Thank you. So now we're moving on to item number eight, increasing permit fees, Girdwood Parks and Recreation Services. Brian?
I have not made any progress on this and I would propose that we move it to next month.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments on this? On the move to next month? Not seeing any. So if there's no objection? Objection? Please, Mark.
I might have jumped the gun, but I wanted to say that I think we're ready to go back to item number six.
Okay, so let's, let's act on item eight first of all. So I think we have. We don't have any objection to postponing item eight to next month. So we will do that. Now we will go back to item six.
So after a little calculation fixing, the averages come out here as you see. TAM is at twenty three oh five, challenge at seven thousand eight hundred and sixty five. Our camp at six thousand eight hundred and eighty five, and then K U L at five thousand four, four forty five. So you can link up. So that's what we come up with. And you can see what the percentage of what was requested, what was granted or whatever was requested.
Thank you. Can you remind me, did we pass a motion for the fixed funding?
You did not.
No, it's a two parter.
Okay. So in that case, I'd entertain a motion for the distribution of the. Competitive grants according to those numbers.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Because of the way the grants work, it's better for us to have each one separate.
Okay. So.
Okay, so we are moving to.
Quadricate, I guess, is the.
Okay, all right. So that, so the, so we send the previous motion and the motion needs to be that we are allocating two thousand three hundred and five to TAM.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion?
There is a question. On the percentage of what was requested, those numbers don't add up to what the numbers are in the packet. For example, the Girdwood Art Institute, the G V S A Recreation Grant Funding Request for twenty twenty six was seven, 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 five. I don't know if it matters.
Oh, that may have been something different there, sorry.
Girdwood Community Club, the request was eight thousand. Micrological Society requested twenty five hundred. Again, I don't know that it really matters, but those numbers don't add up to the.
I think for all purposes, we care mostly about the highlighted numbers.
Yeah.
So perhaps for now, we can.
No, but that is.
Tell me those numbers again.
Seventy seven, 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 five.
Seven, seven. Yeah.
Seven.
Three, seven.
Are they correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's right. No?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion in front of us for the TAM's award, and it was seconded. Any further discussion? The objection? Okay, passed.
Do you want me to just do this? John, you're my favorite, right? Okay. All right. So challenge. I move that we allocate seven thousand eight hundred and sixty five to challenge.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any, any dissent? The objection, sorry. No, okay, passed.
I move that we allocate six thousand eight hundred and eighty five to Heart Camp.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any objection? Passed by a set.
Okay, I move that we allocate five thousand four hundred and forty five to K U L.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any objection? Passed by a set. And now we have the three fixed ones. If you could just remind us of the amounts.
Do we need to do those separately as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I know the four valleys is twenty five thousand.
I move that we allocate twenty five thousand to four valleys.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, any objection? Passed by a set.
Okay, I move that we allocate seven thousand five hundred to Glacier Valley Transit.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any objection? Passed by a set.
Okay.
Finally.
I move that we allocate ten thousand to Little Bear's Playhouse.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Any objection? Passed by a set.
Thank you.
That all, Mark? Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So we've, we've finished six, we're working on seven and eight. Item number nine. Gender item, you see twenty five, ten dash there for considering G B I C input to H L B annual work program and five year management plan. I did listen to the work session and were comments there. I know there was discussion about having a special meeting. Later this week. Not sure of the status of that. Do we have to move that formally tonight? We want to make some changes to the plan tonight and we'll view it up to the body.
If I may, I don't think that we're ready. I, I think that it will, it will. Be some very active sausage making to try to do that tonight. And that there was a general agreement that we thought we could get quorum. To do a work session on this on Wednesday. So. I guess I would like to move that we handle this in a work session, or sorry, in a special, sorry. Special session on Wednesday, I think we said, ten AM. Check. Yes. Especially, yes. That is the motion.
Okay, so the motion would be postpone this item to a special meeting on the nineteenth at ten AM.
Yes.
And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
I'd like to know how we will see edits between now and. From whatever everyone did on their own between Friday. Just so that. If there's more work to be done tomorrow, we know what to look at tomorrow.
Yeah, is there, is there a summary of the, of the discussion from the work session in a, like a table form anyway?
I don't know if Margaret will have time. Down tomorrow.
She won't, but I'll probably try to help you do it.
So we, as far as staff's concerned, do you think we're ready, do you think we will be ready to finalize this on Wednesday?
I, I hope so. I mean, depends on what happens with weather, like. For example, a tree went down today, so I don't know what could happen, but I'll try my best to get something to be tomorrow.
But if it's unrealistic, then we should perhaps take a different approach.
We'll let the chairs know if we need to cancel.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a question about the procedure. In years past, did we have two people working on edits and then. But kind of my shame for what people said at the previous meeting, there was a work session. And then were, was anyone supposed to be working on it? Maybe not, just checking. Or we were all doing our own work.
I think that we, I think that it maybe didn't keep the best track of this during the meeting, but I think that there were certain sections that. I think that there were certain sections that we were working on, but we didn't have anyone consolidating. We didn't designate a GBOS person to consolidate all the comments.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I was just checking. I didn't work there on what we did last year.
I don't know what we did last year.
I don't actually remember what we did last year. I think what would be helpful is if, you know, there is a format and that's why I sent over what we had done the last, as it turns out, two years. I didn't mean to send you the one from twenty-two-four. But anyway, would be helpful to have an idea of what you want them to say and have it related to the page and the item number. There was quite a bit of discussion at the meeting on Friday that turned out to be points to go in a different spot, like we were talking about the overview and accomplishments. And so some conversations happened there, but they actually belong in comments into the one-year work plan instead of the overview of the past year, for example. So I think if you can put together your comments related to the item and the page number, then that would be helpful. And, you know, we can get rid of the things that are duplicates.
Thank you.
Okay, hopefully that is clear. So we have a motion to postpone to Wednesday and seconded. Any objections to that or any discussion on it? Any plans of discussion? Any objections? Okay. That's a special, we will have that on a special meeting on Wednesday.
And that meeting will most likely be online.
Online, yep.
So.
On online only.
Yeah, we don't have the availability of the room.
Right, and that will be noticed tomorrow in the normal.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number ten. The gender end. Actually, we have two items under ten. Let's start with LUC twenty-four oh seven dash four A, Review GBOS Action Related to AO twenty-two-five ninety-one, which was the five percent short-term rental tax proposal.
Brian? So as we all know, there was there was action from the Land Use Committee in September asking for a letter of objection to the proposed AO on short-term rental tax. In at the October meeting, there was there was no action taken or no subsequent action by by Land Use Committee and and then it came in front of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors and we we took action counter to the to the Land Use Committee and offered a a resolution of support for for this, contrary to to what Land Use Committee advised and and I and we owe the Land Use Committee a explanation for for what happens in. I asked for this agenda item to be put on the agenda this evening because I wanted to hear from the Board of Supervisors, the the format for these letters that is that is appropriate. This is a, it's an important action to take for our for our the Land Use Committee as an advisory body to the Gerwood Board of Supervisors. And I I felt that the letter I put together was did not really contain enough detail to put it together right. And so I'm looking for some some ways that we put these letters together appropriately, I guess. I'm trying not to take up too much of our time this evening. The the points that I brought up that the AO changed somewhat significantly between when it it came up in September and when we took our action on it in in October. The 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 original did not really address registration or regulation. It does not provide did not provide solutions to impacts on neighbors, vague on how funds would be distributed and the potential negative impact on Gerwood businesses in the form of of higher taxes. And then we, in our discussions, we we went counter because the amendment appears to be coming up with a way of directing revenue into areas where the taxes collected and that there could be some mechanism for registering the properties being used as an STR. And I'm hoping that this is appropriate for an explanation to the to the LUC.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I would probably summarize that slightly. It's, well, actually, the way I'd summarize that is that the LUC determined that they would only speak on the original ordinance and they suggested a letter, they recommended a letter of objection to the original ordinance. What GBOS did was look at one, at least one of the amendments that had been proposed, but has not been moved. And decided that if that amendment was included, then we would support that, which is in alignment with comments made by at Land Use.
Yep.
But Land Use determined that they didn't think there would be any changes and therefore they wouldn't support it in its original form. So they are kind of two different things. Land Use said no to the original. GBS, GBOS said they would support an amended version. So they're not actually quite in, they're not really in conflict.
Okay.
They're just, the circumstances changed and we responded, GBOS responded to the to the changed circumstances. So I think that's kind of the message. And then I think the the right, perhaps the right way to do this is go back to Land Use and say, you know, do you support an amended version that directs funding to to Gerwood. That's kind of how we, that's a little bit how we discussed it at Land Use last week.
Well, that'd be interesting. Ask them to vote, basically ask them to to do a specific vote on what GBOS voted on. And then figure out if we have disagreement or not. So you're saying.
Yeah, because at the moment, they're not, we don't, we don't disagree because we discuss, we can, we discuss different things in the end.
I think you did a great job on the letter, Brian.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate your suggestion on on returning back to GBOS or back to Land Use Committee. And I'm wondering if that is an appropriate action from us as opposed to as opposed to a letter.
In our in our process, in our procedures, we basically say each body can individually discuss it further, given the given the context of the change and the difference of opinion. Or we can have a joint meeting, or if there isn't time, we just forward vote, which in effect is what happened. Although that's because there was a possibility that there would be a vote. There was not a vote. It's up for discussion again tomorrow. There may still not be a vote. And it may be that nothing happens until December or January. I would suspect December or tomorrow. We don't know.
I think you hit what I was going to say. At the moment that it got kicked over to you, Brian, to write this letter, it was assumed because it was time sensitive, that there wasn't time to get back together with LUC. And as Mike was just saying, like, I think even the next night, it got kicked into November for assembly action. And so I think the thing about this is that as we look further and further back, the scenery is changing in the rear view. But it seems to me that it would be possible for you to have a meeting with the LUC and discuss whatever it is at this point that is really on the table. And then in addition to that, there are these separate AOs that are coming up, having to do with the registration and perhaps a two percent tax and whatever else. So I think I think the part that gets really confusing is that this is turning out to be a more dynamic situation than the one it was, you know, in October. And so your letter was dead on, I think, for the time that it was written. It's just that things keep changing.
Well, thank you. I I appreciate the the opportunity to bring this up in in agenda and and allowing us to talk as as a body and with the Open Meetings Act. I don't get a chance to collaborate with with you guys often. And so this, having this opportunity, I appreciate.
Okay. Any other comments? We can board if not, I go to Bryce online.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and basically kind of say that, you know, my opinion on this is, so my name is Bryce. I'm current Vice Chair of Land Use Committee. And I believe that the kind of representation of exactly what happened during this whole process is categorically been misrepresented by a co-chair on GBOS right now. So that specific piece of legislation, the ordinance, we had discussions at that first LUC meeting in September about how we would respond if it were to actually be directed towards Gerwood. There are specific discussion that we should be asking as well for the additional twelve percent tax and not just this five percent tax. So I I completely disagree with the categorical representation that they are two separate items, one with an amendment and one without an amendment. So this letter was supposed to be delivered to LUC at the last meeting. It was not. And GBOS did board basically and went against LUC's opinion and forwarded both opinions. So look forward to a potential joint meeting on this since it appears that this is, what, the fifth time this year that LUC and GBOS have disagreed on things? Specifically where GBOS overrides LUC, the public hearing process of GBOS. Thank you.
We should talk about next steps then. So at least we've heard from a one individual on Land Use who disagrees, I think, with what we just, how we summarized it on here. So I'm not clear what the next steps are.
Well, it sounds to me that we might have two choices. One is to send it back to LUC and ask for a specific vote on the same thing that GBOS voted on. And the other is a joint meeting. Yeah, is that sound, the board agree those are are options here at this point?
Move for a joint meeting because that's what Land Use just agreed with and it sounds like it's complicated enough that we would do well to have discussion on it.
Okay, there was a motion. I haven't heard a second. Motion for a joint meeting? Okay. The other alternative was requesting LUC take a vote on what we passed.
I'd like to move that we request LUC to make this an agenda item on their next meeting to discuss resolution regarding this AO.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think I I was torn. I was debating whether or not I should have gone for the joint meeting, but I think if LUC is not comfortable with this, it's perfectly within their rights to also ask for a joint meeting. So if they, if if the the will of that body is for a joint meeting, then we can take that route instead. But otherwise, let's try this. Because it's just to simplify and not have this getting into the holidays.
Right. And I, my minimal understanding is that the letter Brian did write, whether it's on time or not, it goes to them next and then they decide what to do. It can work kind of delayed. And there's so much hindsight that it's going to be harder and harder to rehash history and feel like it's taking up time. Which is hard to remember how things were originally when they might change tomorrow night.
I think the other thing to consider is it depends which Land Use meeting you're at as to what the body is, because it is obviously different people every time. So it depends who turns up. It's very hard to say that in September, the body had one opinion. And that's the same in October when there are different people there. Vote could go in all sorts of different ways depending who turns up. So that's the other thing that's changing in this dynamic in the background.
I think it was the same seven people at both meetings.
Maybe. Pretty darn close. Okay, I see Bryce has already spoken, then Jerry, but Bryce first, then Jerry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so on that, the opinion of the Land Use Committee, when they make a motion, especially on an item that's carried over on agenda items throughout meetings, the original motion still carries. It was the original decision back in September of what was voted upon. So I also think that, you know, kind of mocking LUC and its public hearing process for how many people are there is also quite disrespectful to other community members. So thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, I was at the November meeting and of the LUC and just, you know, my reading of the room, we didn't take a vote, but the majority of people at that meeting expressed support for the Gerwood, the GBOS resolution. You know, as long as the money was coming back to Gerwood, there was a lot of people that suggested they would have changed their vote because they voted originally to support it because the money wasn't coming back to Gerwood. And with the amendment of the money coming back to Gerwood, there was people in the room that would have changed their vote. And that's what I heard at the meeting. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. Are the actions clear?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. There is a part two to item ten.
I'm sorry, I don't think you actually voted.
Yep, okay. So let's do this by consent. So the 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 motion is to basically to request LUC consider voting on our resolution. Any objection? No objection? Okay. Pass that by assent. The second part to item ten is the short-term rental registration ordinance, which is in front of the assembly tomorrow and probably will get, or may well get voted on tomorrow. We've had general discussion around this. I put together a kind of very rough resolution if we want to look at it. I can ask someone to lay that on the table on my behalf, or we can do something else. Let somebody make a motion.
I'll move the, like to see the resolution. To see it for discussion.
Okay.
Hello, second then?
No, no objection. At least, well, no, sorry. There's a there's motion in front of us. We're not voting on it yet. So this is a very much a draft. Whereas it's similar to the stuff we've said before, there's a lot of short-term rentals in Gerwood, far, far more as a percentage of the housing than anywhere else in Anchorage. We've asked multiple, we've basically requested multiple times that there should be at least a registration scheme here with proposed very specific. We jumped down to therefore's bottom, towards the bottom of the first page. This suggests, but again, it can be modified in all sorts of ways. This suggests that we support a the registration scheme as proposed. We have posed, so that's the S version. We would oppose the S one version. There is an S one version which does everything the S version does and it also opens up residential areas in Gerwood, Eagle River, downtown and the whole of the Anchorage Bowl to allow hotels, large hostels, any kind of visitor accommodation in residential zone. I don't think that's something we as a body would support. So, again, we can delete that if we want to, but this would support the S version, oppose the S one version and ask for some additional changes or either now or in the future for registration within Gerwood. And there are three specific ones. Some of these come from two of these come specifically from the last thing we we proposed to set forward, which was there are no consequences, for lack of a better word, for non-compliance. You're not supposed to. These things, if they're not registered, but there is no consequence to doing so. When we previously discussed because the financials are such that a lot of money can be made by by running short-term rentals in Gerwood at least. Not having any consequences for non-compliance seems extremely weak. So there was a lot of work done with in GHGC and we supported it to propose specific fines. I don't know if they're the right numbers, but there was a lot of work about enforcement and consequences. The second thing is The second thing is that there is no mechanism in the, in this proposal to actually provide feedback, complaint, or anything else of two specific properties. That's a feature which you see in most of these regulations, but not, it's not in this one. A local contact is provided by when somebody registers, but there's no mechanism to get messages there. There's no blame line or even recommendation line. There's no way to get that information across. So that's something that is missing. And again, there was definitely, there was definitely a request for doing that in the proposals we've made ourselves. And the third one is, again, I don't know if people are going to support this or not, but the third one is, I think personally, I think we are well beyond the discussion of registration. Registration should have been done a decade ago, or at least five, six years ago. We are at the point now where we have, you know, a quarter of our housing is involved in the short-term rental market. That's too much. The, I think we're at a point where we need to start having a serious discussion about a maximum number of short-term rentals in the community. And this does not do anything for that, but it could do, a future change could do. So this would be urging that discussion to start. So there could be other things to be added. That's just a starting point. Please, Kelly, stop.
I just have a question about the statement of G-BOSS opposes the part allowing, right, all visitor accommodations in the ever residential zone. I don't see much justification for why we oppose that, nor do I necessarily oppose it. But I don't really understand the depth of what you're trying to get at there.
Okay. So we don't have to have that at all. We could just support the S version.
Yep.
The S1 version is a different version of the ordinance. It's exactly the same as the S version, but it takes away the land use, the land use code requirement, building hotels, motels, hostels, large hostels, I forgot, inns as well. Currently in Gerwood, there's a process for doing that. So if you're going to build a very large hotel, you have to go through a site plan review and things like that. What the S1 would do is it would permit you to build a large hotel next to your house in residential zoning with no review process.
Oh, okay.
Right? That seems a little too much.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, which is why, I agree with you and I, if that is what it, not having read the language.
That's what it does.
But I, yeah.
It opens up, it basically says all visitor accommodation of any type permitted in all residential zones across the whole of the municipality, which takes away a significant amount of process. And it makes visitor accommodations very different from other types of commercial activity. So commercial activity, if it isn't visitor accommodation, you'd still have to go through a process. But if it's a hotel, it's free that you can do it immediately with limited restrictions, but no rule. So it seems like a massive opening by new code. But again, we don't have to make a statement. We can just, we can just choose to say nothing about the S1 version. Just focus on the S.
So I personally reviewed the S1 version. It does strike me as really strange. And I wonder if they were trying to find a way to clarify Airbnb's being legal in the first place. But I will say, so I'm a little uncomfortable with it just because I would really like to review the S1 on my own and I certainly don't want to do that right now. I do want to say, I think you were saying a bullet point under the furthermore's. And that is the one about absolutely, or possibly earlier under the support for the S version, which is that we, I think the community has a very strong interest in getting the information. So we need the zip code information. And so I think that should be part of that stuff. Okay.
Thank you for working on it.
Yes.
And I feel like it'd be kind of, the assembly passing the S1 with that would be very surprising. And could we also cite a resolution that we've asked for registration before? Cite before with this?
Well, I mentioned the three resolutions we had passed prior to this. One was a
Oh, yes.
Short-term rental study. One was get on principles in any future regulation. And one was specific comments on the, on their, the assembly's attempt to do this last year. But then I also mentioned the fact that we had forwarded on very specific proposals, but we're obviously not in a position to initiate, so.
Well, and I agree with, completely with the zip code petition. And all those asks, one through three, have been requested by community members and committees. And I feel like if they are going to discuss this tomorrow, we would be a good community to say support of the S version. I'll move the S version if we can have a
Do we have a motion?
I guess I moved it for
We have a motion to this. We have a motion on this. So we can make amendments to change it.
Okay, so the motion was to approve this.
Yeah.
Okay. And so I would like to offer the friendly, friendly amendment to remove the "and" with the S1 description. And then to add, wherever the board thinks appropriate, something about the zip code.
That could be as a whereas, just saying that, you know, the data may extremely be valuable, blah, blah, blah. So we could do that as a whereas and then reinforce it as well.
Well, I think that I would like to say within our therefore's, we that we support blah, blah, blah to require registration scheme with the understanding that this will provide us
Right.
With our, the zip code information that we have long requested.
That can be a, a, a clause on the end of this step. And then, so that was, so I think there were two modifications to suggest.
Two modifications.
Move the, move the S1 reference to S1 completely.
Yes.
And then add a second clause under the first therefore to emphasize the zip code level data.
Yes.
Okay, I completely support that.
Okay.
Second, I'll second.
Okay. So we'll try and go through this process then. So we have, we have an amendment in front of us as just described. I think we have a sense of the language. We don't have the exact wording. But we could either do the exact wording or do what we've done before of allow a after the meeting edit and then verify tomorrow. I think the essence of it is clear. And to remove the, the reference, the S1, so the paragraph that starts with "and" references the S1, an alternate paragraph on the first page would be needed. Any further discussion on that amendment? Any objections? Okay, so that amendment passes. So.
Now that it passed, we asked that, could you make the amendment tonight and get it to us so that we can get it out tomorrow so that every group can see it? Because we're going to try to get to the assembly. We need to get it to the service office as soon as possible.
Yep. I mean, I think we can probably, as soon as this meeting finishes, just pull that, pull that one, put those words together very quickly. Any other, any other discussion on the amended resolution?
I could just add my thought, which was if anyone has a personal thought, they could contact or something.
Yeah. Okay. In that case, we can probably vote, let's do a, I think, a real vote. So the solution hasn't ended.
Okay. Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Ockneak?
Yes.
Breonna Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Your second. Okay. That was the second part to 10. Number 11, Holton Hills Development. And we also have an A and B here. The A is discussion about, Jennifer.
Okay, so I was late to this, with zero apologies to staff, but I did turn in something. I don't know if you guys have it. And basically what happened is that when the developer showed up at our HLP work session, I, we collectively figured out that we'd had a little bit of a misunderstanding and that the time is of the essence here. So this is going to be a situation where LUC has discussed this several times, but has not officially voted on it. And so I've already contacted the LUC chairs and explained the situation. The one thing I will say here is, yes, neither one of us was, or nobody that I know, we were not aware. There was a breakdown in communication through the middleman for the developer who's having some personal stuff going on. So I don't think it was anyone, one person's fault. But at any rate, the developer told me that basically time is of the essence and our best chance for getting some flexibility on this is to do it now. So I just typed this up in about four minutes. But it was through, after talking with staff, however, I've not had a chance to talk to staff on whether or not there were any changes. But the, the main point here is that we're interested and the developer is interested. So we hope that planning and zoning will say, okay, that's fine, as long as we don't get caught in a battle. So, and the other thing is that the understanding has been with the developer that they will be working with particularly staff to make sure that we adhere to, or that we still maintain sufficient lighting for safety considerations.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Support this.
Where will we send it? Oh, who will be the recipients?
I think this would be to plan on some, so my Yeah. My understanding is the, the application has been, has gone in and there's now a date of the January the 7th for planning and zoning hearing for conditional use. And this is a condition. So this would be something that goes to planning zone. So that, I was interested in your comments about the timing. Because my, my thinking would be this, this would be a requirement for, to be in front of planning and zoning by January the 7th. Is there something sooner we would need to do? No, I mean, I think we could probably pass this tonight. I don't think there's any, there's any reason to take longer. I'm just wondering, is there something sooner than that that we need to do?
I'm not entirely clear on that, but the impression that I got from the developer is that this is basically, that there's workshopping happening right now.
Got it.
Question?
Please go.
Do we have any input on other sources of light pollution within the Holton Hills development? So I'd say that streetlights are just one component of a dark sky strategy, if you will. A lot of, a lot of communities, I have experience in Prescott, Arizona. And the, there's also agreement in the, in the communities about how house lighting works
Yeah.
in conjunction with the, with the streetlights. I would like to suggest not limiting our, limiting ourselves to streetlights, but perhaps a dark sky friendly strategy, if you will, might be a
That's, that's a good reminder. When I originally talked to the developer about this, I stated that one of, in exchange for agreeing to this, because she's particularly interested in lower streetlights, that in exchange, we wanted something within the homeowners association or the development plan to reduce outside lighting. And I know absolutely what you're talking about. I know from friends' experiences with quote unquote dark homes that have flood lighting on all the time. So, all right, so I can add something about that in there. And we could try the approach, we could, we can either take another look at this on Wednesday or take a look at it, do the 24-hour thing and take a look at it and see if I, if I add that in, if the board is okay with it.
Another way potentially of doing it is to pass this as is because this is about streetlights. And then we have until January to say something broader about dark lights in general.
Okay.
Which would be a separation.
We just want to do the 24-hour thing so that we cue their thinking. I, I agree with you that we could pass it, but like, I think, I think Brian's point is really valid. If I think, you know, making some position as G-BOSS at every opportunity because they only listen to like 3%, what we basically need to say is 400,000%. And so I think we should say it all. So that's a lack of recognition.
So do we know that if the developer is creating anything towards dark sky strategy in, in homeowner association or anything like that?
Good question. I don't know that for a fact. All I know is that when we talked, she seemed as horrified as I was about the idea of dark, dark houses covered flood. So I get the sense that the overlap in the standard diagrams, if you will, between group of interests and her interests come down to aesthetics. And she certainly sees an aesthetic value in not having bright floodlights on houses. But it is worth, it is worth, definitely worth confirming that.
Yeah, I really like the idea of getting this in front of them sooner rather than later. I think that tonight we can come up with either with this right here, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this right here. But I would like to see something about this dark sky strategy, not permitting ourselves to streetlights.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is, yeah, do the 24-hour thing. And I would, I would actually, I agree with this folks here, that I would like to have it in here just to keep reiterating and as cleverness, that never hurts to repeat ourselves on the things that matter.
Question for the author, would you just also put it in the title? Or in the whereas, the word you just said, strategy?
Dark night lighting strategy is that
Or whatever Brian was saying for that, just to summarize.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Would you have any interest in editing this with me?
If it's within 20 hours.
Okay.
I think it should be another therefore though, because we're asking. And we want, we want dark, right, that, friendly lights, I can't. And we want a strategy that, you know, eliminates crazy light from the new houses. I can't.
Okay, I'm not being articulate.
But it needs a therefore because it's a request.
I think it makes sense to have it as a title and as an additional there. Okay. I just, I know this is going to be kind of turning out fast and I know you're super good at editing. So if you wouldn't mind, if I can just run it past you then.
If the body's willing to pass it in principle with that stipulation, I'm happy to edit.
Okay. Yeah, just throw one more thing out there. This, I think there's a, there's a broader discussion to have as well as this. I think this is, this is triggering, you know, this is obviously one particular development where we have, we have some alignment when it comes to streetlights between the developers, the developers' desires, I think, the community's desires. But, you know, maybe this is a good starting point for a broader discussion about, you know, beyond just Holton Hills.
That's a really good idea. I think particularly debating, like sending something to planning and zoning saying, regardless of code Gerwood would like to see.
Yeah. It, it came, it didn't really come up very much in the comprehensive plan, which was sort of surprising.
Yeah.
But I know it's been a discussion a lot at other times. So, you know, maybe it's something that becomes an amendment to that as well. Okay. I think we have a, we have a motion in front of us. We have a process and a second. So I think we should do a vote on moving forward with this motion with the amended language and then use our 24-hour review process. So we should have, hopefully we will have this tomorrow. It will be sent to everyone. We will then start 24-hour reconsideration process. And if it does not get reconsidered, then it would pass. If it does get reconsidered, it comes back to us next month. Okay, so let's do a roll call vote.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Ockneak?
Yes.
Breonna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have a part B, which is conditional use planning and development. This is going to be probably a little bit of a placeholder. We saw the, the application, the notification, the application came in like half an hour, an hour before this meeting. So I definitely have not had a chance to look at it.
And we'll show you here, if people want to see the live application. So this is the planning department. You go to the, I'll go back here. You land here, you go to planning department cases, you click here. Easy way to find this is you go down to Gerwood Board Supervisors. And then this will come.
So the doubt.
And then you can scroll down and you can see here is the planning status for both the PDU and the subdivision variance. So you can click on that one. And then you scroll down and you can And then you scroll down and you can find the packet information here. So this is the, that's the routing cover sheet, but it goes up there and opens and then you can see here the different reference numbers. So this gets in here. Oops. And then that takes you back there again. And then you click here. It's into a whole bunch of stuff. So getting more of the details. So here's the whole staff report and the resolution. Are they reviewing agency routing? Click on those and it gets you into it, but I'll jump to it. This is what I opened from that. There's a whole application packet in here. And it is full of a ton of information, 30 pages worth. So you can read through the whole thing. Back to the front there, I think comments are due. This is for the plating boards. This one's for the plat and the other one's for the PDU. Plating board is on, oh, these are from the past ones. Sorry. Yeah. It gets confusing when you get in here, but I think this is due. Comments are due. Look here.
I remember correctly, there are two different dates for comments. There's a, there's a date for agencies, so entities within the municipality. And then there's a date for.
Yep. So the 15th. Councils are due. I think your next meeting is on the date 15th. So we can, I, we usually have no problem turning them in the next day. So if GBOS and, you know, this will present this at Housing Economic, we'll present this at LUC. And, and then GBOS can make comments and we usually turn them in the next day. And they'll go into the final packet that goes to the assembly or to the planning and zoning commission.
So that's the, that's the difference. They get, we get the, we get the comments in by that date. They go in front of the, they're part of the packet that the planning and zoning commission has seen. There is still the opportunity to actually speak at the hearing.
Correct.
But obviously that is, you're limited to, well, for GBOS, five minutes.
Only one representative for GBOS, right? Sorry, only one representative for GBOS.
GBOS could get five minutes, individuals get through. But that is not obviously something which is written and people can consider at their leisure before, the commissioners can consider at their leisure before that. Okay. So again, I don't think there's any action tonight. We weren't, I, we weren't sure if the application would actually be available, but now it is. So we will have this as a, as a major piece of business at our next meeting.
Question for process before that meeting after now. Would two people want to be working on responses for the PUD? So whatever we look at in December's packet is ready to be.
Yes, I think that makes sense.
Anyone interested?
I would suggest maybe those two representatives also attend the Housing Economic and Land Use to present these to those committees so they have.
Thanks, Kyle.
They're all ready.
They, they'll have to understand, they have the, these have been writing topics, so they should be able to act on them as old business.
Thank you, Dallas.
Thank you. I think we have process. Right. Now we'll move on to item number 12, which is several topics around Federation of Community Councils. And I am going to request that we accept a change of chair for this item and Brian takes over the chair. Anyone like second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any objection? No?
Brian.
Brian, you're in the hot seat.
Okay, I, I am in the hot seat. Okay. Well, this will be the, the first time I've had the honor of, of being chair at one of these meetings. So hopefully Kyle and Margaret will help keep me on track. Then let us, let us begin with this, the first part of this agenda item update on.
No, that's.
Let's move, move the, sorry, move the update to the later thing.
Okay.
One text is probably the right thing.
Yeah. Okay. So, and this is the, the delegate clarification. Is this where we?
Yeah, I think it would be, personally, I feel it would be really helpful to identify, to just explain what the Federation of Community Council actually is. There's been a lot misinformation about what it is. Not necessarily for people sitting here, but in the, in the broader community. Various blog posts, et cetera. So I think that would be a good starting point.
Well, then if you can provide us with that information.
I think, could I read it if it's okay in the packet this? Is that true?
Yeah, well, we actually, I think we actually have the, I see Ariana, who's the executive director of the FCC. Maybe would be a good point to just ask Ariana if she could give a quick summary of what the FCC is and how it relates to Girdwood.
Actually.
Very similar to the presentation.
Actually, I'm going to object.
January.
I, I'm going to object. I would, I would prefer that we not hear from Ariana.
Okay. Again, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Ariana to speak to this, please.
Okay, can I, for, for a second? Kelly?
Yeah, I just want to, I think that I had a profound learning through the Girdwood Airport discussion on the importance of formally treating conflicts of interest. And so I just want to invite any disclosure for personal or financial conflicts of interest on this topic, so we can treat it formally as a board to protect ourselves from future questions. And a, a conflict of interest is an interest affecting belonging or accruing to an individual or private entity as distinct from the public at large. And that's ANC 1.1506OB. So that's direct from code. So I just wanted to treat, do, is there, is there any disclosure that would make anybody on the board have a distinction from the public at large with regard to this topic?
So I'll speak to that very specifically. I do not have a private or financial interest in this. I don't see any value in disclosure. It just isn't relevant. This is a public issue. It's about public position. It's not private. It is not a, it is not a financial issue. I think. So no, I do not have a disclosure.
Okay. So I understand that we do have staff from FCC here to help educate
Yes.
us on, on, on the, the function of FCC.
Yes.
And I have an objection here from, from one of my colleagues. And the, I feel that I could use some education on, on FCC as it's been 15 years since I've been to one of their meetings. Are you, do you have concerns that this is going to jeopardize our ability to discuss this?
I am concerned about two things. One is I've been a little disappointed about the, well, let me clarify. I, I've been, yes, I've been disappointed about the way that this subject has been flogged and misconstrued publicly and particularly by, I mean, it, it makes sense when one feels questioned to then turn around and question in return. That makes total sense. Like, it's completely understandable. On Charlie Shirts, completely acceptable, which is a different thing. So that is, that's, that's one concern. And the other concern is that while I might not mind a simple, I don't necessarily, in principle of mine, a simple explanation of FCC, I do not consider it relevant to this question. I do not consider the role of FCC, what it is or is not, has no bearing whatsoever on whether or not we had somebody representing us without being elected. And that is a side point. And this is the kind of tactic that I was concerned about with as this has moved forward, both through the press and through our last GBOS meeting. I was very disappointed in the direction that took with a direct attack on LUC. I've been concerned about attacks calling community members liars and conspiracy theorists. And I view this as irrelevant. I think, I appreciate Ariana showing up for our meeting, but a definition of FCC is not necessary in order to decide whether or not we are being legitimately represented.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying about whether or not the function of FCC is relevant in this, in this discussion. And I appreciate that, that Ariana is here from, from FCC and, and I, I am curious as to how she can help clarify our, if she can help clarify our questions. And, and I'm wondering if she can speak to that specific subject.
So if I may, are you saying specifically to the subject of whether, about the representation?
Yes.
So there I have a different concern of, I have asked the FCC formally.
I've got a point of order. There's already a debate going on over here. My point of order is we have a topic in front of us. We've had the, I've already asked somebody to speak to the context of what the FCC actually is. Surely if the discussion is about what the delegate is, then what the FCC is, is critically important. Unfortunately, we just lost the, we, we lost the executive director briefly. Hopefully she will be back. But what I'm, I didn't hear, I, I'm, I have a right to definitely speak. I'm frustrated about process, about there being no opportunity to speak formally on this at all. The item was introduced to LUC without any notice, discussed, acted on without any vote to move it to you, to old business. And then at our LUC meeting last month, or earlier this month, sorry. The.
That's not a point of order.
The mover, I, I don't know why random members of the public are speaking here. The mover actually declined, basically made sure there was no discussion whatsoever. This has been my very first opportunity to speak to this. Despite, as you said, all the, all the comments you, other people have been making in the press publicly. So I think it is relevant what the FCC is. It's an absolute fundamental element of this discussion. So I would like to, again, just, I can describe it, but I think it would make more sense for the executive director of the FCC.
Excuse me, it sounds like you're carrying twenty of the words.
So thank you for that.
You are not the chair.
So thank you for, for that, Mike. And unless there is objection, I am, I am going to invite the executive director to speak for a few minutes on just an overall summary on, on FCC for, for my edification and hopefully for our edification moving forward. So before that, Kelly, you have a point?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on my previous point. And again, it's a point of orders. My understanding of conflict of interest is that somebody would disclose a potential conflict of interest, but it would be the board that determines if there is a conflict of interest, not an individual that determines. And so again, we're learning as a board how conflict of interest works, but I believe that anybody who has a potential distinction from the community at large should say that there's a potential and then it's the board that determines whether or not there's a conflict of interest. And I do think we need to treat that according to the requirements as a point of order and so that we document it formally, because I do think it matters. I'm not, I don't care what the outcome is, but I just think it's the board that determines it, not an individual.
Okay. And you're suggesting that, that someone on the board here has a conflict of interest?
It's my belief that someone on the board is distinct from the public as regarded, as related to this conversation because they are not the public at large, because they're directly involved in the history and, and the issue. And as I understand it, that is the definition of conflict of interest according to municipal code. And I think we need to treat it formally. And I think failure to do that calls into question the entire discussion. And so again, I don't think it's a huge thing to do. I just think we need to ask ourselves the question and we need to, as a board, determine again, if there's somebody here who has a private interest affecting their belonging or accruing, or an individual as distinct from the public at large.
I think we could move through that fairly quickly. Would you?
I, I do not have a disclosure. This is a public matter. This is not a private matter. This is not a financial conflict of interest. This is literally the actions.
Personal or financial.
I'd like to, can, can you please?
Yeah.
Comment.
Let Mike.
I would, I, this is a public matter. This is a matter of my, my actions as a, as a member of this board. So this is not private. This is not, this just does not fall within the conflict of interest discussion. Now, I understand why the people might think it is. It doesn't. That's not what the code says. That's not the purpose of it. So, you know, there is a process. If you think there should have been, there's a process to go through the ethics board. That can be done later. We, this is just, it just appears to be a way to the.
If I may, I believe this is a, this is a chair decision, not an individual.
Yeah, this is, this is a, a chair decision and, and yeah, this is a chair decision and I am speaking as a, as a fairly new person on GBOS, as a fairly new member of GBOS. And I'm going to say I'm, I'm a little over my head on this. And to, to make this discussion or to make this decision without training, I, I think is, it's, it's above my ability to do that. So I am going to abdicate on, on that. And I think that we, I, I'm, I'm ready to go ahead and, and hear what FCC has to say about about their, their program.
Sorry, I do appreciate that, but actually abdicating isn't really an option. You can either, you, you can rule or you could request that the board vote on it. But there, there really is an interesting question here about someone who, whose ethics and behavior have been called into question, they're voting on whether or not their ethics and behavior have been called into question. That is a, I'm a little surprised that that's even being questioned or that we're having this conversation. And particularly that other people's concerns about that are being denigrated is, is astounding.
Point of order. So the mechanism, there is a mechanism for, there's mechanism for going through disclosure process. It starts with when somebody makes disclosure. I checked the code. This is not disclosed by term. We can either move on or you can try and invent it. There is no structure to force somebody out of, out of the discussion if they, they did not disclose. So I don't, I mean, this doesn't need disclosure. Everybody is aware of it. It's a public act. So we could just move on, I would suggest.
Yeah.
Just urge the body and the chair, thank you for taking this move role, kind of forcefully, but if, if we need to have productive meetings and share information, I do not know what keeps referring to this item or this situation or what it's talking about, because we still haven't even clarified the agenda item. So if the chair would like to ask someone online to speak and the board has all gotten a chance to speak, which I think everyone had, then, then we can turn to the public and then go back to whatever this item is, once we get the baseline, if it's what is the Federation of Community Councils.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that comment, Brianna. And, and yeah, I would, I would like to kind of get a little baseline going here myself so that I understand this, this issue a little bit better. So on, so to move forward and keep this meeting moving along, I would like to ask the executive director that is here to address this briefly on a summary of FCC and, and its standing in the community.
Just from the public, just making that the, I believe that the director has a conflict of interest and should be asked those questions before sharing as well, because the information could be biased.
Thank you. And now is Ariana on here? Okay, I see Ariana.
Hi Chair, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Just to check before I move forward, should, should I make any disclosures, Chair, or should I proceed?
You should proceed, please. You should proceed, please.
Thank, thank you. My name is Ariana and I am the executive director of the Federation of Community Councils. I, I will just keep this brief, and if there's something that I missed, please don't hesitate to ask questions. Our organization is a nonprofit and our purpose is to support and foster neighborhood engagement, particularly through the community council system as recognized by Anchorage Municipal Code and the Home Rule Charter. We have a volunteer board who is made up of representatives from every community council. So there are 37 current community councils, so there are 37 representatives. And we do a number of services, much, you know, very similar to the GBOS staff. We provide administrative support, training, and outreach.
Thank you. That's what I understood FCC to be. And, and then what is the, what is the status of each representative on the, on the FCC?
Well, every community council makes their own determination of how a representative is appointed. We don't have particular rules about how that is made, other than we need to be informed. And I'm sorry, if there's, if you can clarify the question further, I want to make sure I answer it properly.
So, yeah, my question is, is how does FCC confirm the status of, of the delegates that are attending each of the meetings?
Yeah, so generally, we get an email from the chair until, which time we hear an update. And that's kind of standard practice for us, not just for FCC delegates, but for any officers. Generally, it just comes via email until we get a new email.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the board for Ariana, please? Jennifer?
I have a question as well, sorry.
Sorry, you can go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah. There's definitely been statements that the FCC represents community councils or by being a delegate on the FCC or speaking, you know, you, you effectively can speak for a set of councils, et cetera. Can you just explain the relationship between the power of the councils, the voice of the councils, and the voice of the FCC? Can it make policy decisions? Can it override what councils do, et cetera?
So the Federation is a nonpartisan organization and we are restricted from making any statements that affect legislation or the pushing forward of any particular candidate. We don't make regulatory decisions, or I would, I should clarify. The board does not make resolutions that support any particular policy and we leave that to the councils to make those decisions and act on their own behalf.
Thank you. Jennifer, please.
Thank you. Ariana. Can you please confirm for the board that you received a request for the documentation that is required by your code? And in this case, I'm going to refer to the current existing FCC code, not the, not the new proposed. But code as it stands says that in order to be seated as a delegate, the community council has to either complete a federation delegate appointment, something or other, which I understand few people have, or other communication by the community council president submitted before a federation meeting is called order showing the delegate or alternates have been duly appointed. And so what I would like your confirmation on is that that documentation that is required by your code was requested by me more than a month ago. Can you please confirm that?
I wanted to clarify, it's not a code, it's a bylaw. We're a nonprofit.
Oh, sorry, sorry, bylaw, sorry.
And we did receive your request and we did, our, our executive committee reviewed the request. We do have a privacy policy and our response was that we asked the GBOS because there are various interests in this, in this topic to just provide copies of minutes where GBOS says that a motion has passed and that they are interested in receiving a copy of that documentation.
All right, so one, two, sorry, go ahead.
Can I make a motion that we as GBOS request that documentation?
Second.
Can I? I believe that that documentation has been provided. I did see a copy. I was CC'd on a copy that went to Margaret. Am I wrong?
If that was provided to Margaret, it was not forwarded to me.
If it was provided to Margaret, it came just before this meeting and is in the packet.
Oh.
Sorry, Margaret. Sorry.
My understanding is Mike Edgington willingly gave the information, so.
Yeah, that information's in the packet, along with, I think, some other contextual discussions at the same time back in 2021. So I, yeah, I heard that you'd, you'd asked and it was the privacy policy of the FCC didn't allow the release without, without a motion. So I just added that. So it's public document now.
And happy if you still want to make the motion and make the request, I'm happy to still go through that process, to be clear. I just think you guys already have what you're looking for, and if I'm wrong.
I apologize, Ariana. I was referring to the email I got from you. As a matter of fact, today, reiterating that they, that the FCC's position was to prioritize privacy concerns over public interest in what should be public documentation. And so I apologize, but again, that email I received from you was just today and I was working on the packet today, but it is rather lengthy. So if I missed something that got added in at some point, I apologize. It looks like we're still looking for that.
I saw minutes with highlighted.
I only saw minutes, but I didn't.
And that's what I assume you're asking about.
No, I am asking for the documentation stating the position of holding down this.
Okay. I'm sorry, it stumbled in here. I won't find it.
That's all right. I hadn't found, well, obviously, I haven't found it either. All right, I think that's.
I think, I guess we need to make sure that the documentation is consistent with that, which has been requested, so that we know if my motion needs to be rescinded or if there's an outstanding, or yeah, if it needs to be rescinded or clarified. So I think we need to see what was permitted before we know for sure that the request or documentation has been fulfilled and if Ariana's request for a motion from GBOS stands.
All right, we are getting there, so.
But it's not just me.
So I'm scrolling through here our minutes that describe the conversations at LUC over those months. The item that added more recently coming up here. My.
Yeah, that's the, that's the conversation from March 2021. And there's, I think there's a second email exchange, Margaret, between.
Yes, the one that has the.
Yeah, where we, we just removed parties that are not part of this conversation now, or not public email addresses. This is what initiated the discussion back in 2021. The suggestion that came from an assembly member, actually originally, that maybe we should go to, we get more involved in the FCC. So Margaret, I had a discussion about it. I discovered that Margaret was listed as a delegate, which is clearly a mistake. Updated contact information. And then based on the recommendation from the manager at the time, the, they wanted a name for a delegate. So I, as the land use supervisor and as the chair, provided the documentation he asked for. And actually, I would like now to move that.
No, point of order, point of order.
So I think we have a.
Point of order.
I think we have a motion on the table.
Do we still have a motion?
I believe that Kelly has a motion and seconded by Jennifer. And we are curious if, if the information contained here satisfies the, the motion that was made.
Yeah, so as I understand it, Jen made a request to Ariana for documentation. Ariana gave the formal answer that said documentation required a motion from GBOS to be shared. Then this information was shared that it had come in. And so my question now for discussion is, is this documentation satisfying the request that you made, Jen? Or is there outstanding information that you've requested that we need a motion of GBOS to ask for?
I need to ask two questions, just one, what page are we on on the meeting?
Well, thank you.
I'm up to page 201 and I haven't.
You need to go nine pages and you're there.
Okay.
There it is, 210 or 220.
Okay, and so then my question would be, is this the, and this would be a question for Ariana, I suppose, is this the sum total of all available documentation relating to any and all Girdwood representation on the FCC since 2020? Actually, I'll say since January 2021, to simplify.
To the best of my knowledge, yes, I will say that this predates my tenure with the organization. But to the best of my knowledge, this is actually more than I had, because he also, I believe there's a, a conversation directly between Mike and Margaret that I did not have a copy of. So mine was only the email between the info@communitycouncils.org email and Mike Edgington.
I would amend my motion to just be more of a standing general motion that GBOS asked FCC to share information as related to the approval process, you know, for the duration of this, you know, just to keep an open, an open request that we have transparency for public documents from GBOS to FCC.
So those, in the very nature, that would be public documents, right?
That was the theory to begin.
That was the theory to begin with, but what I understand from Ariana was that it needs a specific motion from GBOS asking for those documents for FCC to share them with GBOS. And so I'm just generalizing the motion so, so that we cover ourselves for any future or whatever, because I think this one specifically is, to the best of Ariana's current understanding, the bulk of it. But in case there's something else, or in case something else comes up, just giving ourselves the standing approval from GBOS to ask for documentation, in case it's needed. Or whatever kind of motion Ariana needs to be forthcoming with requests in the future.
Can I ask a question about that for, for myself, just as the person who deals with these requests?
Okay, Ariana, you can please ask a question.
Thank you. I just want to know for the clarity of the motion, any GBOS supervisor would be able to make the request? And two, is this in perpetuity past your guys' tenure? Like, would this be longstanding until which time a future GBOS board would rescind it? Potentially rescind it?
Yes.
Yes to both. Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion asking for information from FCC.
Yes.
And an open communication channel, I'm understanding the way in which you have amended your motion.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
You seconded mine.
And I, and I would second the amendment as well that, that we are, we would be seeking a GBOS vote that we have an ongoing public interest in and would like any documents related to our, any representation by anybody from Girdwood on FCC. We would like those documents to be public. I didn't state that very well. You stated it better.
And Ariana's clarifications were perhaps as more powerful than anything, so that any GBOS member could make a request for information with specific about the relationship between GBOS and FCC in perpetuity such that it remains part of the public record and can be utilized for GBOS proceedings as it relates to the FCC.
Just a nice clarification. Are you saying that the body, the body can, or any individual member of GBOS acting as an individual member?
Any member of GBOS acting in the interest of the body can make a request for information.
But how do we determine the interest of the body if the body hasn't? There is a distinction between us acting as individuals and us acting as a body. And I just wanted to clarify whether you're saying the body does or individuals do, because it's not always clear when people are acting as an individual outside of their supervisor role or as a supervisor. But it is clear whether the body has made a decision or not.
So if I could just jump in, the, the motion on the table is, creates a, a more positive information exchange is what we're looking for. And, and it does not exist currently. That, that, it does not exist currently that myself, for instance, as a member of GBOS, could not contact Ariana and ask her specific questions relating to Girdwood delegates on FCC.
Well, you could, but you would get the same answer I did, which was stone wall.
And so the motion is such that, because Ariana is saying in order to provide those documents, we can need a motion from GBOS that allows it. And so I've made the motion that we deliver what FCC is asking for, for transparent exchange of information to occur between GBOS and the FCC.
Okay, and this motion was seconded by Jennifer? And so I think we can have a vote.
If there's quick discussion, even though there's been some discussion, I would ask for a discussion item.
Please.
If the items in the packet that we see here and then the minutes that were highlighted, that were all from 21, have to do with the item of delegate clarification for FCC. I vaguely remember a lot of those meetings where we were just like scraping for someone to be representative from Girdwood and it announced over and over and over at Land Use. And that's basically what was highlighted. And then this email exchange about finding someone. And if that's the clarification of FCC, I don't know if we need to ask for more in the future tonight.
I think it's abundantly clear that we do need to establish and vote on a public interest and public information because the FCC, and by the way, some of what you introduced there in that conversation was in particular to this motion. This motion is just about, do we have a public interest in materials that we think should be public about our public delegate? To, it feels a little bit ludicrous to me, but clearly it is not. So the, the motion is just, do we believe materials about our delegates to FCC? Do we believe they should be public?
So if I can make a further point for further discussion, this would almost be relevant to any community council meeting that anyone of us attends. That, that in our life, here in Girdwood and as part of the Anchorage municipality, we attend multiple meetings over the course of a year where we are the only person from Girdwood in that room and are sometimes asked for opinions and recommendations based on Girdwood. And so I would say that, that this request for information would be consistent throughout any of the community councils. throughout any of the community councils in Anchorage, not necessarily just the FCC.
Well, actually, this motion is particular to FCC.
Correct.
And, yeah, 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 this is particular to FCC and it's particular to the question of official delegates voting on behalf of Girdwood. And so the question is, do we on GBOS, does anyone on GBOS? I would actually, I mean, personally, I think anybody in the public should be able to ask this question, who's representing the community? And how long and when? I, I think that anybody in the, but at the very least, a member of GBOS should be able to ask for that without having to get a vote of the body.
I'm, I'm getting very confused now. So I just heard the question about who is representing? Who's the delegate for Girdwood? That's public information that's been public for years. You can go now and look at the FCC site and see the list of every single delegate and alternate for every community council. That's always been public information. That's not what I thought was being requested. What was being requested is specific communication about the, the way that the determination was made about when we changed delegates, or when we created effectively a delegate. And then contextually, I think it's very relevant how we went about that process back in 2021, because again, I'm seeing a lot of this representation of that. So I've released everything I have. And, you know, I'm still not exactly clear what we're, what this motion is.
This motion is specifically a request to satisfy Ariana's limitations in sharing information when requested by GBOS.
Okay.
To enable transparent communication between GBOS and the FCC now and in perpetuity in the interest of public transparency and public records. It's specific to open communication and transparent communication between the FCC and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors that enables Ariana to satisfy requests without specific GBOS action as have been identified in this process.
Right, so about the.
Purely about.
About the.
Sharing public information. It's not specific to the, it's just purely general and it's to eliminate the roadblock that's been identified in open and transparent communication between the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and the FCC. It's no more, and it's not specific to this issue. It's, it's identifying an issue between the two bodies, which is not in service of the public good. And I am raising a motion to eliminate said roadblock and issue.
Heard on that one. I do have a question for Ariana, if I may, and it will help, hopefully help clarify. Ariana, when other community councils request information or individuals on those community councils request information like this, do they also need to speak as a community council or can individuals from the community councils make those requests?
Yeah, I can definitely speak more to this, and I, I do think that there's a clarification in the type of document that's being asked. What, what is being asked for is an internal communication between a board member and staff. And we, we don't regularly get requests like this. Another thing is that is unique about GBOS is that you guys have two chairs who are equally empowered. And all community councils otherwise have one chair. So when there's dissent between the chairs, we can't refer to one or the other. And in all cases of tension, we go back to the minutes or ask for clarification from the body. I personally think having this motion is great, and I would love to have this standing clarification so that I don't have to ask any questions, I can just follow your guys' request. A similar thing we do is we hold email addresses for community councils for them to be able to send out information that inform, those email address can't just be shared upon the request of any particular member or even a chair. It requires a motion or a resolution in front of the body that provides permission for us to share that so that the body is in consent of the, of the information that's being shared. So it's a, it's a similar matter in that way.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm prepared to call for a vote.
Ready? Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknik?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
No.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes for one.
Will you take it from her then?
Jennifer, yes.
I'd like to make a motion because I was just.
Through the chair.
I was making a motion when I was last.
No, sorry, but through the chair. I was, I was, I, I'm the one who was acknowledged by the chair.
Okay.
This is through the chair. And I also believe that the next most appropriate motion is the one that was forwarded to us by LUC, and so we already have a motion forwarded to us by LUC that states the issue in front of us very clearly. And so I would like to make that motion derived from the LUC's vote stating the Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby clarifies that. One, Girdwood does not have a current delegate to the Federation of Community Councils. And two, Girdwood has not had an FCC delegate since January 2021. Now, I skipped my preamble, I do have a lot of backstory about this, and some of it is represented in the emails. We just saw that it all boils down to the fact that there was no election. And I've heard a bunch of different things, including that, oh, well, other board presidents can serve as, but as Ariana stated correctly, Girdwood Board of Supervisors has two co-chairs. States in our, of some procedures that our duties are shared equally, but also on that list of duties, it does not include FCC. And then the second justification I've heard was that no one else was interested. That doesn't, it's not actually reflected in the public record, which I have combed through. And what's becomes more clear is that there's ambivalence in the community about whether or not we should have representation on FCC. There were people interested in doing it, there were other people interested in being delegates, but there was ambivalence about whether or not we wanted to be represented. And I think that is an important distinction, but even if that were not the case, even if only one person were interested, self nomination and self election is still not a thing. And so that is clearly indicated that that's exactly what happens in the, in the emails we just saw. So that is why I have made this motion, I've tried to keep it as simple as possible. A little embarrassed to even have to make it. I feel like we shouldn't have to be clarifying that our delegates should be formally elected and officially nominated. A little embarrassed that we have to state that self nomination's not a thing, but that's where we're at. So this is the motion.
Second.
Glad to speak to that.
Further discussion, please, Mike.
This is, again, this is the first opportunity to speak to this. I think if this really was, if this whole thing had been approached as being trying to find out information, really learn and know what was going on, then there would be opportunity.
Frank, you, you need to extend your meeting, we're well past the 10 minute mark.
I move to extend by thirty.
Thank you.
Brian, do you want to see if there's any objection?
So, any objection? I'm going to object. I would propose 15 minutes on this topic further.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean that we are approaching 10 o'clock. And.
So if you want to extend the meeting past 10?
Yep.
Then would you say that you're?
Thank you, I'm sorry, first time over here.
Yeah.
You're doing great.
Okay, so we are voting to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
No one's objected.
No one's objected.
To 10:30? Everybody's on, okay.
All right, right, thank you. Yeah, so many, many things. So again, the, I have a big problem with process here. There has been LUC voted with zero information except for some short statement from my co-chair and no opportunity for any discussion or any, any further information. So I don't think this represents a, this represents particularly poor use of public process and definitely doesn't represent an informed opinion of LUC. The second thing is factual problems. I think the second thing is this is a very, very dangerous precedent. What effectively my co-chair is saying is she has effectively invented a process which does not exist, it is not in our bylaws, it's not in our rules and procedures. There has to be an election for this role. And then criticized behavior in the past, which is very public. There is minute, there is minute, there are minutes to say that I was acting as delegate. So it's a public record, everybody knew at the time and you for the following, the best part of the following year that I was acting as delegate while we were seeking other delegates. So again, the claim it was, the claim it wasn't public is untrue. The claim that we didn't follow procedure which is now being invented is untrue because that procedure never existed. I don't believe any FCC delegate for, for Girdwood in the past had a full election, they might have done, I don't know. I can't find any records that way. So the invention of something today and in criticism that in the past we didn't follow something which doesn't exist is a very, very dangerous thing to do. Again, I don't think that LUC members had any information about this. They, well, this wasn't presented to them, that question wasn't posed to them, they were just given a blank, a blank statement and told vote yes on it, which is effectively what happened with no discussion, no debate. It would be a mistake to follow this here. I would make a suggestion that if I'm going to make an amendment, I'm going to amend two things. I think it's completely fine that we shouldn't have a current delegate, I think the question's been raised and very fine with that. I think that we should have a process for having a delegate. And I would suggest that we have, that by default, the delegate to the FCC should be the land use supervisor. I think there should also be a mechanism to allow land use to vote somebody else in if they will. But I think the default behavior should be land use supervisor, that was the justification for me doing the wrong in the first place. And I think that should continue. The statement number two, Girdwood does not have FCC delegates since January 2021 is just factually incorrect. You look at the minutes, the minutes show that we did have someone seated as delegate. The criticism, again, the post, the, the post criticism that we're hearing today of things in the past is just nonsensical. It's a, it is a, it's a very, very common thing. Most, I think at least half of delegates to the FCC are present or chairs. Jennifer wasn't a chair at the time, it was Jerry, Jerry was getting, we're well aware of the discussion, he was involved in all this discussion. This claim that a, the chair of the, one of the co-chairs can't handle land use supervisor, can't be a delegate, again, makes no sense. So I think we, sorry. It's very dangerous to go back and make changes in the past. Are we going to change minutes in the past several years later? Why are we going to change people's recollections several years later? It's a dangerous thing to do. So I would suggest a, and I'm proposing an amendment to this. I think we should make the statement, Girdwood does not have a current delegate to the FCC, that's fine. We should state that the FCC delegate should be the land use supervisor. Although land use can elect somebody else to fulfill that role. And I would strike number two.
I'll second for a discussion, so that we can keep moving.
Second on that.
And for discussion on that item, if this body feels that this is worth our time right now to talk about the motion on the table, which that is how process is. I did remember there were people interested in serving, but the night of the week didn't work for the people that were interested back in 2021. And I would really kind of wish we could redo this so that our public knows that we're getting good business done in our meetings, we still have more to do, it's after 10. And this quite frankly seems kind of petty to be all worked up about. So I'm willing to amend this if what the board wants to do is make a motion next instead of going back and redoing whatever was done at Land Use, which I read the minutes, but I, I wasn't there. I don't, I don't totally understand.
Thank you for that discussion, Brianna. I'm, I'm going to also just point out that speaking of going back and on, I recall I attended multiple meetings at FCC over the years from about, I don't know, it was probably 2010 through 2015. And the, the lack of participation at FCC is staggering. And I, I hope that, that FCC can figure out how to support the function of community councils better. This, this supporting community councils better furthers the unification goals of the Anchorage, the, the Greater Anchorage Area Borough and Municipality action from 50 years ago. But the what has been happening there, I don't think is, I don't think we can relitigate it. And I think that we can only, we only have the power to move forward and create positive action for our community that benefits our community.
Do you have something, you were, your hand is up.
Kelly, send your own. I don't, I don't, no, I don't need to send us down, you know, crazy rabbit holes, but I'm just legitimately curious. Like, I, I really don't have a dog in the fight other than open, transparent conversation and like truly, you know, resolving. And, and, you know, my concerns around, you know, was the appointment done in alignment with bylaws? And not, bylaws aren't always specific enough to, to be clear. And was it formal, you know, because somebody representing GBOS, even if it's at the, you know, assembly meeting, has to be formalized. And then if that person was representing, is there a mechanism, you know, by which they were reporting back? And if not, you know, was, is that another gap in process that needs to be filled? And so, you know, I guess my question is simply, was the appointment done in alignment with all written bylaws? Was it formally done? And was the representation represented at community meetings and GBOS meetings as a result of that representation, you know, reporting back from like supervisor reports or whatever else we do when we are filling formal books? And yeah, I think those are, for me, the, the important things to. And, and I agree somewhat, Brian, like whether or not we have had a delegate since 2021 may or may not be relevant to going forward. I think it doesn't sound like there's disagreement that we don't currently have a delegate, perhaps in recognition that the appointment process originally was not in alignment with the formality required. Therefore, we can agree that right now there isn't a delegate because we determined that there was a gap in the appointment of the previous delegate with regard to being compliant with documentation. That was a long run on sentence, but I claim fatigue. But basically, that's kind of the heart of the matter for me. So I, I agree that point two may or may not be the thing. But point one acknowledges failure to comply with appointment requirements of GBOS and/or the FCC. Therefore, negating whatever appointment was presumed to have been made in 2021. Whether or not that meant we had no delegate, la la la, I agree with Mike, public records suggest that we had a delegate. There was a human there representing Girdwood, so whether that was formal and approved or not, I don't think matters necessarily, I agree with you, Brian. I think what's important is that we agree as a board that we don't currently have a delegate because whatever appointment was made originally failed to comply with the requirements.
Thank you, Kelly.
Sorry for saying that four times.
Jennifer, please.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be quick. I'm a little concerned about assuming hypocrisy and complaining about process objections, whom clearly process has been skipped here altogether. I do want to say that this idea that somehow or another, the idea of democratically electing a delegate is asking for a procedure to be invented is, is, makes no sense. There has, there is, actually, I, as I said, I did hours and hours of research about this, and there is a historic procedure. When, back in 1999, around the time LUC was first coalesced, the FCC delegate was decided through the GBOS meeting when we appointed positions. And so it used to be considered a position you were appointed to, either the land use supervisor would take it or somebody else would as part of that conversation. So there is a historic background to that. The reason why number two is in there is because of a clause in the bylaws for FCC that states that you can hold an officer position with holding a delegate's position. So if you were a delegate and you get elected to an officer position and then another delegate gets appointed, you can complete your officer term. But we have a weird situation here where someone who was not elected as a delegate became an officer. And so one of the things that I heard from FCC, sorry for me to say straight, was that that because this person was an officer, they were therefore a delegate. But their rules are pretty clear that you need to be a delegate first. So it was like some, some kind of cart before the horse thinking, which, and by the way, just want to say one other thing. I'm not going to address some of the other thing, but it is unfortunate to hear adjectives like petty and whatnot when the interest is simply in democratic representation. I don't think that's petty, I don't think it's ever been petty, I don't think it ever will be petty. And, but I'm going to try to leave that just in the interest of time so we can move on. But that's a disturbing thing to hear from a Girdwood board supervisor.
Thank you. We have an amendment to act on, correct? Is that where we're at?
Yes, the amendment is to say that there is not a current delegate. The delegate should be the land use supervisor and then to remove item two.
Okay, so we can vote on that amendment and then vote on the main amendment.
Okay, ready? Yeah, Jennifer Woodgard?
No.
Kelly Akme?
Um, no.
Joanna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Ryan Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, so now to the main motion that will allow more efficient and transparent communication between FCC and GBOS.
No, that was a very, we already passed, now we're on this, now we're on the revised version.
Amended motion is this motion with those changes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're good, welcome to the fray.
I'm going to make a very quick amendment as well, just for conformity. So the first sentence now doesn't match what we said later on. So I would just say that we can, actually, we can basically strike everything up to those, those points we just had. So we don't need the, where there's no evidence of official appointment, election, et cetera. We don't need to talk about that, we can just say we've already got the three statements about, about the two statements rather, about the FCC delegate position, a power of appointment in the future, we don't currently have one.
I'll second what I think I heard.
The amend?
The new amendments.
The full amended motion is to state.
Yeah, what I'm just doing is just cleaning it up because we currently have a whereas statement which does not conform with the later points. So if we just remove the whereas statement, we keep the two points we just made. We do not currently have an FCC delegate, we've agreed on that. And we would appoint, we would by default, we would have the land use supervisor being the FCC delegate in the future. Although the LUC may vote, they may appoint somebody else, they may vote to appoint somebody else. Do we then have to go through?
Point of order.
So we have a, in just a second, please.
You don't have to restate the amendment.
Okay.
Margaret stated it.
So the amended motion is to simply state that there is no current delegate and that the LUC supervisor will be appointed to serve as the delegate to the FCC. And then there's something about, also about maybe GBOS or LUC making a different point.
I suggest.
And I don't know what to.
We don't care.
Okay.
It is.
And so that was.
Sorry, can I just, can I just ask a question of my fellow, fellow member here? We have, just for context, there is some complexity. We've heard from the ombudsman about who can serve in this role, and we don't particularly want to poke that bear at the moment. So are you in agreement that it would be simpler just to say that the FCC delegate is the land use supervisor? For now, we can make changes in the future.
Yes, I think you and I are going to need to get together and talk about this one because this one has, does have complexities to it.
Yes, yeah. And Jennifer, you have a comment to make?
No, no, I do not.
I don't do not.
Kelly?
I just wonder if we need to go to the public. I don't, point of order, I don't understand either, and if I was in your shoes, I wouldn't know when we're supposed to seek public comment or not. But I see there's hands up and I'm, I want, I know there's, I, my observation is that many people in the room are likely here for this topic. And so I just want to, I just want to make sure we're not excluding the public by getting embroiled in our own conversation. And I don't know when we're supposed to do that, maybe, I don't know if you know.
We agree. We have, I think we have a number of, a number of public that are, are looking to make comments this evening on, on this matter. And this is going to basically run our time out on this one here. I will, I will open it up though, and I see one in the room here and I see two hands up. And I would appreciate it when called, that three minutes is what you have. And then if you can go first, please, and then I'll get to online from there.
So first of all, it feels like there's a lot of talking out of both sides of your mouth a little bit because how can you say that it's not important, but you've been showing up for four years? You've never once reported any of this information back to this community? That's distrust, it's dishonesty, and it's also illegal and unethical. Forty, forty months is what I was told. So I was the person who found this out for the whole community about kind of what was going on and brought it to people's attention because of how this all went down anyways. Second of all, technically, the FCC is created under the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan, under appendix, I think it's C or D. Again, and repeat, we are not the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan. So I've got problems with saying that we go back and we put the LUC because, yeah, it's, I truly don't even believe that we shouldn't be sitting on the FCC board. We are the Girdwood Area Plan. We are not the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan. There are two entirely different land policies that we are forced to comply with. When you say that you put us at, put the LUC as the delegate automatically, first of all, there's no vote, it's got to be a vote. Second of all, like, we don't belong there. We, we don't belong there, this is not our stuff. And then to have somebody that self-appointed for 40 months, never responded back, and then worked their way into a chair position, this is massive distrust. Not once have I heard in three years that I've attended any of these meetings you mentioned that you once sat on this.
Please speak to the chair.
Sorry.
Thank you.
They have not once relayed any of this information. They're doing giant bylaw changes under what they're calling a simple revision and it's a complete revision. And it's actually, it's jurisdictional changes, so it's, it matters what's going on. And these conversations are very much about this community, about these changes that are trying to be implemented. We really need to get, this needs to go back to LUC. And on top of that, GBOS is not a community council, LUC is our community council. And FCC just needs to figure that out. I'm sorry FCC that you guys don't understand how we work, you should figure that out on your end.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll go online, Amanda, online, please.
Thank you, Chair. And, you know, this has been, and just as you mentioned, first, Brian, just that, you know, this has been confusing or trying to figure out, you know, how does Girdwood interact with FCC? What does FCC matter to Girdwood? It's been really confusing, I've been going to the meetings. And one thing has been really apparent is that the self-appointed Girdwood supervisor did affect a lot of changes that are going to ripple through, that have rippled through the whole municipality. So that in this resolution, I just urge people to keep this, the statement that there is no evidence of an official appointment or election of FCC delegate since 2020. That's really important for the rest of our neighbors, right, across the municipality to hear because it's a very confusing thing for them too. They thought that there was an official appointment, they thought there was election, and there wasn't. And so when we can just have this clarity, all of us are able to move forward. So I don't view it as really looking backwards, I view it as just an opportunity to get that clarity so everyone can move forward, but best for their communities. So I really appreciate you considering that, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, I appreciate you taking the time to, to discuss with us this evening. All right, Grace, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Public office, and specifically representation, is an office of trust. It's my understanding that a GBOS supervisor self-appointed himself to the FCC as the representative of Girdwood, knowing that a vote of this position had not been taken at either LUC or GBOS. It has been three or four plus years that this GBOS supervisor has presented himself as the GBOS representative, as the Girdwood representative to the FCC with no reports from this organization to our organizations of either the LUC or GBOS, like every other delegate has made. Currently, this GBOS supervisor is now in an executive position with the FCC. And there is much confusion in Girdwood and in Anchorage about the relationship that we have with Girdwood and Anchorage. I would encourage you to either please ask this GBOS supervisor to either resign from the position of FCC or the GBOS, or both, to reaffirm the trust that is needed to have as a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to make one short comment, very short comment. I've heard a lot about never reporting back and not, people not being aware of this. I have made zero secret about being, going to FCC meetings and being involved in FCC. I've mentioned the fact that I was elected chair multiple times at GBOS and at Land Use. There was a presentation by the FCC in January at Land Use. Ariana came physically to the meeting, described FCC, described me as being the chair. Multiple people who claimed they know nothing about this were sitting in the room next to us. Honestly, nobody in the meeting cared, nobody asked any questions. The opinion, I think, that most people in the community as the FCC is relevant to what we do because it's performing the functions that we have staff to do. What I find most frustrating about this whole experience about, I know white people, you know, want to attack me, I'm a loud voice. The, the thing that's most frustrating about this is the, the reason I got involved in the first place is because nobody else wanted to get involved and I thought it would add value to the community. So it's part of my general service to the community. The only reason I ended up in an executive position and in an officer position at the FCC is because nobody else in the FCC wanted to do that. So by providing service, by volunteering my time for zero benefit in terms of, definitely in terms of time and money, I feel, you know, you become subject to attack. And again, the most frustrating thing is the number of people I've spoken to in the last month or two who've said they've stopped coming to these meetings because of this type of behavior. The behavior we've seen both from members of the public here and members of this body to just attack anybody who, who serves in a, in a public position. It's driven a lot of people away, it's continuing to drive people away, it's frustrating, it's disappointing. I guess that's the way we currently are as a society. But I would like to look forward to the future, and we have a lot of work to do, and this is just a wasteful distraction, in my opinion.
So I would like to.
You, you're within 10 minutes of a meeting, so if you need to extend, you need to make the vote now. If not, the meeting will end at 10:30.
Thank you, let's, let's have a vote and, thanks.
Actually, wrap this up. I do think we have, some of us have a right to rebut.
But for, just for beating, do you want to extend or you're going to, and at 10:30 so we know, stop you at 10:30?
I'm, I'm not in the mood to extend.
Go on, Kelly, are you trying to?
No, I just have a comment.
Well, I, may I, Chair, I think everyone's spoken way more than twice.
Yeah.
Down the board, so we can move to the vote. I call the question for the voting, I, sorry, Kelly.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I don't think we've all had a chance to speak to the proposed amendment, and we're voting on the amendment right now for them.
True, true.
And I haven't had a chance to speak on the amendment.
Oh, I didn't, I thought you did.
Thank you. Dave Neiman, I just don't see that a need to have a delegate on the FCC. You know, it's, but for many reasons expressed, we have a direct relationship with the municipality. I've heard other people who went there say it's a marginal utility. I think anyone could volunteer and go there and just be there and not be a delegate. They could sit, and they can comment at the end of the session. So it just, you know, this is a, you know, and, yeah, and Mike, I don't understand, you know, as a delegate, if you haven't been.
Speak to the chair, please.
Mister, Brian, I don't understand, you know, how, how that can be, that you can be a delegate and not, you know, respond back to the community. So, so basically, my, my point is I don't think we need to be involved. I don't think we need to appoint a new, another person to be a part of the FCC, a delegate to the FCC, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. I will hear from, from Ken.
Ken Hatch. I just have a real quick, I was at the LUC meeting, jury was there with this big folder. He said LUC was the de facto community council. An LUC representative should be on this FCC group. GBOS is not a community council. Your email that was up there obviously pointed out, and I appreciate all the work that you do for Girdwood. You do more than most people combined. This is Mike that I'm talking to. But you're not a community council, I don't know why, I understand you want to go there to learn about what's going on with Anchorage's community councils, but we should not have a delegate that is not a community council member on a community council group. Thank you.
Okay, Kelly, and then we're going to.
Yeah, I was just interrupted by the public, so I just want to finish my statement, which, which is just simply that I hear Amanda's comment that the clarification is needed. I hear a lot of discussion in the room about the future and what we should. I think there's two specific issues. One is that we agree as a board, we do not have a delegate because there was not one formally appointed. That clarifies our current situation, I think that's important to resolve tonight. I think there is a bigger issue of what the future, la la, that is, poof, I can't even. So my proposal is that we resolve tonight, simply that we don't have a delegate and there was none formally appointed, that's just a done deal, and then we determine the future in the future.
Thank you, Chair.
I agree, I agree that.
One minute.
Sorry?
We have one minute.
One minute.
I just, yeah, I just want to say, I agree with that. I've heard from numerous members of the community, they want to talk about whether or not we want to even be involved with FCC. And just also, I would like to state for anyone interested in this, I, I have considerable public documentation about this. And there's, that contains rebuttals to some of the, this representation's made tonight.
I call the question before we are automatically adjourned.
Sorry, quick point, sorry, quick. I, you're calling to question the current amendment, and the amendment includes the LUC nominee, the nomination of the LUC delegate, correct?
I think so, that Margaret stated a long time ago. Staff asked us to extend the meeting and it's going to be over. So I have to vote, we're gonna do this.
Or someone. Sorry, go ahead.
I said, or someone extend.
All right, tell you what, I will move to extend by three minutes.
Second.
Motion second, okay.
Any objection?
Objection? Okay.
The meeting extended to 10:33.
I think we've had multiple people ask to vote on the amendment.
Right, vote, right to vote.
Yep, so let's vote on the amendments.
Okay.
Somebody just read what we're voting on so that we're all clear, because we've had.
So the amendment, the amended motion is to simply state that there is no current delegate to the FCC. So the amendment, the amended motion is to simply state that there is no current delegate to the FCC and the LUC and, or, and that GBOS will appoint the LUC supervisor to serve as the delegate.
Uh, sorry, point of order. I believe that the, the amendment is actually to strike the first sentence of this and to, and the second part has already been removed. So the, the, um, amendment was actually strike the first part and add that the LUC representative is the FCC.
Point of inflation, the, the amendment has exactly the effect that, uh, uh, Margaret read, yes.
Actually, the amendment, sorry, but the amendment is to the motion and then the motion that she read is, would be the final one if that passes.
Correct, so it has the same effect.
Right. Uh, it's different, but yes.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
Jennifer Wengard?
No.
Kelly Ockney?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Now back to the main motion.
Which is what Margaret read.
Yes. Ready?
Yep.
Okay, Jennifer Wengard?
Yes.
Kelly Ockney?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero, as amended.
And, yeah, say.
Can I, we have two, I think you had to share back. So we have two minutes. Is there anything we need to do in, in business?
Well, do you just want to quickly go through them and introduce them and, yep, just say that they've been introduced and we can talk about them next month?
Yep, we've got shifting.
Okay.
Please read the, the letter at the bottom, well, somewhere in the package for Wednesday about CM. Board members.
Yep, and, uh, update bylaws. We'll do that next month. Oh, actually, the, sorry, the, yeah, the shifting dates, we should just make sure everyone is aware of the dates are likely to shift in January, February, and March due to holidays.
We can confirm those in December.
Yep.
Yep.
One week later.
Yep, same move to adjourn. Thank you.